Chairman.
Okay, welcome everyone on YouTube and those in the audience. Today is Monday, July 15th. We call the meeting to order. At this time, please ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
During the pledge, it costs you $100.
$100. Okay, everybody have a chance to look at the agenda. If there's no additions or corrections, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
Chairman, hold on, I do need to amend the agenda. I need a letter of support for a broadband conversation with a private entity that is willing to invest in Valley County with some funding for broadband.
So this is a broadband letter of support. We'll put it underneath Commissioner's Discussion as the last item. After the River Ranch thing. So I need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the amended agenda for July 15th, 2024.
So where are we going to put it?
Underneath Commissioner's Discussion, it'll be right above the Veteran Service Officer.
Okay.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll get right on into it. These are all action items. The first one is the meeting minutes of July 8th. Did you get a chance to look at those?
I did, everything looks fine.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve minutes of July 8th.
Move your second and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
You sure this thing won't open up?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is also an action item. This is the Board of Equalization Meeting Minutes of June 26th, June 27th, June 28th, and July 8th. Everyone get a chance to look at those.
Good.
Yep.
Entertain another motion.
Chairman, I would move that we approve the Board of Equalization meeting minutes.
I believe.
A motion to second to approve these four sets of minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Depending on if everything went vague, it will be good.
Okay, the next agenda item is another action item. This is Idaho Public Safety Communication Commission Grant Increase Amount.
Mr. Chairman, this was actually approved last Monday on July 8th. And the...
Just didn't sign it?
You guys did sign it, but there was an additional, I believe, $12,000 that was allotted for this grant specifically for monitors. So Sheriff's Office is requesting that this amended grant application be submitted to the Commissioners for review and consideration for a grant award of $42,466.04.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the grant increase for a total of $42,466.04?
Chairman, I move that we approve the increase amount for the Idaho Public Safety Communication Grant. I didn't get that amount, I'm assuming Doug has it.
$12,000. An increased $12,000 to a total of $42,466.04.
Is that the one with the EOC that Valley was talking about? Okay, second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the increased grant amount for the Idaho Public Safety Commission Communication Grant. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
It'll be Jamie. Just love all the smoke. I don't even smoke.
Why do you do that? I'm not happy. It would be much worse to be down in Cow Valley or wherever it is it's come from.
Is there 18 fires now in Oregon?
Okay.
Okay, do we have, next on the agenda is an action item. This is a broadband letter of support. Do we have that, Cherry?
I am trying to print it right now, Mr. Chairman. So what this is, this is a letter from the West Central Mountains Fiber Network where we have an investor that is interested in investing in Valley County for fiber. So this would allow us to... This would allow us to go ahead and partner with initial conversations. It's just a letter of interest. It doesn't in any way obligate the county. It just says, yeah, we're interested in having a conversation on this.
So is this person going to come in down the road here and talk to us about this? What's the plan?
I, probably, whenever we get to that point. I think right now it is simply just a conversation saying, yeah, we'd like to engage in that conversation.
Was that in her packet here?
No, it wasn't. I just got it on Friday.
Oh. Did you send that to us?
I apologize, I did not send it to you. I can do that right now. I'm trying to print this. My phone is not wanting to plug anyway. I need to...
Letter.
Who got it?
Oh, I think it's offline. I may have to have you.
Okay.
I'm not. I know why, I'm going to plug down.
You have a rough day, Sheriff.
Every day is a rough day when it comes to technology. And this will also be signed by all of the cities. And then Tamrac is, no, let's see. This will be signed by all the cities. The whole consortium, that's the West Central Mountains Fiber Network.
All that money that was put out there to do this broadband, they're going to be tapping in and using some of that money to do this?
No, that money was given to, basically Zipley got all the money in this area. They got $12 million. And that is going to be coming out of Elo, down Farm to Market, and then down Big Fork. That's what the current, and it hits like 1,500 people. But this one is an investor coming in, looking at the rest of the county and figuring out what it is that would be needed for that. And I have to have you do it anyway because mine just didn't do it, so.
So this is basically just a letter of interest to meet with this company to see where the possibilities are. There's no financial contribution or anything like that?
That's correct.
Okay. If there's any more, no more discussion, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
What kind of, I'm curious how, what kind of funding?
It's all private funding.
All private funding.
This is an investor that wants to invest in it. And then they actually, they keep it long enough to make their money back out. And then they will actually turn it over to somebody within the community that wants to run it. Chris Gerton wants to run something like this. I don't recall, they already have a fiber network set up up there. So he could actually run it. But what this is, is this is open fiber network. So it allows anyone onto it, it would allow the opportunity for additional providers to come in instead of the current providers.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions?
I'm good.
Need a motion to approve the letter of interest.
I'll make motion to approve the letter of intent for the, what do they call them? West Central Mountain Fiber Network Consortium.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
It's being brought up, Mr. Chairman.
So we're going to move on down our agenda item. The next item is not an action item. This is a presentation from our Veteran Service Officer, Jamie, welcome. Good to see you, come on up.
How are you guys? Good morning. Let me give you guys... You know, it's lovely when you wake up and your stapler breaks, so sorry.
Oh, that's...
Not stapled.
Look at the stapler right there.
What's that?
Your stapler right there.
That's okay. I end up scanning all my stuff in and therefore I have to un-staple it anyway. There you go.
Thank you.
All right, so, seems like everything is slowing down right now. The VA claims are coming back way slower. Everything that we're sending out, I don't know, it's just hitting a big brick wall. So I don't know what's going, I mean, my assumption is just all the PACT Act claims that have all kind of started coming in. But, so I saw 31 new outreach visits, that's 31 new, or I say new, right? That just means we're starting a new claim. Sometimes there are veterans that were denied that I saw before. Sometimes they were, you know, just different situations. Currently working with three different spouses for veterans who have recently passed away. Working on the benefits and the burial and all of that with them.
Does Valley County have, are we set up for veterans' burials where they cover the cost or does the VA cover the cost?
Well, the VA, they cover some of the costs. And it all depends on the veteran's specific benefits that they have. So everyone assumes that every veteran gets a burial, but that's not the case. So if they're service-connected, they get, you know, depending on what their rating is, they get certain benefit. If they are service-connected at 100%, then it's 100% covered. So everyone falls into a different category. I always tell everybody, just come and talk to me or something like that. I did do a training at the Legion for the auxiliary because they asked me to come out. There was a lot of confusion around what benefits are available for spouses. So I did that training with them. There was probably 30 people in attendance. They opened it up to the public. That was pretty, actually pretty good attendance for something like that. So, yeah, I did that one as guest speaking. We did receive a $5,000 donation from Jim Lamont for the veteran services in Valley County, so that was very beneficial. We've got five veterans/family members that are currently using that for different services. And that, pretty much, we opened it up to counseling, in-home care. We have one person that we, I sent this person down to the VA for a psych stay and we gave them some money to help cover their expenses while they were down there. So, you know, he didn't put any real limitations on it, so we're being very careful because it is, you know, it's only $5,000, but greatly, greatly, we appreciated it, so. Other than that, 31 new outreach, 54 total visits within that and some of the previous ones, three home visits. The guest speaker that I've done, you know, where I went out and did the guest speaking. You guys knew the previous Veteran Service Officer, Mike, so he did pass away.
Oh, no.
Yeah, it was very, so we're working with his spouse. It's been about a month or so ago. We are working with his spouse to work on benefits and the burial and all of that. So the Legion just had a big Friday night dinner, kind of in his honor. So that's, yeah, I wasn't sure if you guys were aware that that had happened, so.
I didn't know that happened, thank you.
Yeah. Jamie, can I ask a question? So the donation, do you have any idea how he heard about you?
I reached out to him. He had come into the Legion and just said, hey, if there's ever any needs for any veterans. So I reached out and said, is this something you'd be interested in? And he said, absolutely. Nice. Any other questions? If you look at the second sheet, so the first one is just the things that I'm kind of doing currently. Second one goes into the different, the new monthly pension and disability payments paid to veterans of $10,559. And then with back payments, obviously due to claims taking a while. The new back payments coming into veterans were $45,044.93. And three claim denials.
Who's the PACT Act? I forgot.
So the PACT Act is the new law that they came around for. Basically, they made certain conditions to where, of course, it's not going to jump into my brain. They made certain conditions such as related to the burn pits to where veterans could just say it's automatic. If you have things under these categories of health conditions, it's automatic disability. Same with the Vietnam era, anything related to Agent Orange, those things, that's, it all falls under what's called the PACT Act. And they increased all of the conditions that are related to the PACT Act, which just really kind of opened a floodgate of veterans that have been able to now file on conditions that they've had due to service-related conditions.
Jamie, what are the three claim denials? I mean, without getting into the weeds, why are veterans denied claims?
Sometimes people will, I think the biggest ones that I hear is hearing. You have to have something in your record that shows that either, you know, related to a blast, related to something service-related. A lot of veterans, as they're getting older, their hearing starts to go and they say, I'm going to file a claim with the VA. But if there's nothing in your service record that showed something related to hearing. Or another one that we see is if a veteran, even if they, you know, they were involved in something that was very high noise-related, if their service or their job since then has a higher exposure of, you know, they get out and run a jackhammer. The VA is not probably going to give them a claim for that, so.
That makes sense, thank you.
That's the biggest one that I see. There's always random other ones, but the biggest one I see is related to hearing.
Yeah, we'd sit out there on the fire line, was it Fort Sill at the artillery? We were the missile crew, but we would sit there on the fire line, they're firing their 105s and 155s and we'd just fall asleep waiting, guys get done shooting.
I wonder your hearing's so bad.
Huh?
Don't want...
I bet my wife's not sitting in here right now.
So, yeah, so the three denials, they happen, they're quite frequent. I only put them in here as a denial if it's a complete denial of the claim. If they open it up for further information, then I don't put it in as a denial, so.
Hate seeing our veterans denied.
I know.
Jamie, does McCall Legion, do they have like a meal or anything or is it just a meeting?
And it's not even a regular meeting. I frequently go over there on the days that they have posted for their meetings and their door's not even open. So I'll reach out to the commander and they're like, oh, well, we just decided we're not going to have one. I'm like, okay. So I think they're just, they just don't have the numbers and the people that are in leadership position. You know, if they're not available, then they just don't have the meeting.
Just don't have it.
Definitely the active post is here in Cascade. But I still get a lot of referrals, you know, from them just because they know who I am, so. That and St. Luke's up there in McCall. Get quite a few from St. Luke's.
The training, that's in Boise, is that an all-day training or two days?
It's three days.
Two days?
Three.
Three days. Okay, so then, assuming we'll be paying for meals and hotels and all that?
I wasn't sure since we were on a contract now how that was going to work, so I just asked the Legion to cover it. Because I wasn't sure how that was going to work with you guys now, where it's different.
We probably should talk about that, maybe we get...
Mr. Chairman, we do have a budget for her travel of $1,000.
Oh, do you? Okay, I wasn't sure how that works.
A thousand?
Correct.
Yeah, and that would cover three days, but I don't know, do you have other trains overnight? So it sounds like...
It's just the hotel down there at the...
Riverside?
The Riverside, there you go, thank you. Down at the Riverside and then the travel back and forth. That's the only expenses, because they pay for the meals down there for the county service officers.
Well, it sounds like you have funds for the county to cover that, so.
Okay, great, well then I'll put in the reimbursement for that. I wasn't sure how that worked now that we were at the...
Will they just get a claim and submit it to Doug's office?
Bring you receipts.
Any more questions for Jamie?
Thanks for all you do.
Yeah, thank you for letting me do it.
I apologize. While we have just a few minutes, I do want to share with the Commissioners that our Veteran Service Officer and myself have discussed fiscal year 2025 budget and she's requesting the same amount that was budgeted for in fiscal year 2024 with no changes. Just give her an opportunity if she would like to make any other comments to the Commissioners.
No, I feel like we are definitely right at that, that much better place that cover my costs as well as what I feel like is fair, so.
That's good news, thank you.
Yep. Well, thank you very much and thanks for letting me do this. Appreciate it.
Have a great day. Hey, our next agenda item is not an action item. This is a presentation from Inside Architect. It's going to be online, and so we're going to go mute and we'll see everyone back here at 9:45. at nine forty-five.[152.24]
I can and you can hear me if I unmute myself. Perfect.
Hey, welcome back, everybody. We're at our nine forty-five agenda. This is not an action item. This is a presentation from Inside Architectures and have an update on the road department. So Dana, I will turn it over to you.
All right, here we go. So let me share my screen here. All right, can you see that?
Yeah, we can see it, Dana.
Okay, we're good to go. All right, so. These are the plans that we. Are ready to submit to the building department and to use as a bid set. So we're. We're ready to go. Just give you. A couple highlights here. There's a lot on the project, but you guys know a lot of it, but a couple of highlights that have changed since the last time we talked. At one time, we were going to have Jeff and his crew do all the excavation. And the rebuild of the pad underneath the building. That has now changed. Dan recommended that we not do that. Dan Coons, so we have made that change to the set to include that into the project now. So that's been done. And so that's a change from the last time we talked. Floor plan is not much has changed in there. Got to tweak a few things here and there, but. For the most part, we're. We're working with Jeff and his crew that was being great, by the way, answering all our questions in a timely fashion. So once again, the admin area here and the maintenance bays out here. So we have the welding bay, then we have the heavier equipment repair bay here, and then just the repair bays. On this side, these are future auto lifts. Truck lifts that are going to go in here, and we are showing the foundation work that needs to go for those for when they eventually show up. And Jeff might correct me too, but there's at least one, maybe two lifts that are coming from the existing. Facility that will, he will get to pick which spot he wants to put those in. So that's pretty much it there.
The front door, point out the front door again, and it's coming into a foyer, correct?
That is correct, right here. And then you go this direction to the warehouse or the maintenance side, break room, then the admin area.
It shows a covered entry, is that right?
Yeah, there is a, let me. Let me jump to that sheet and you can see that. There's the roof plan, but let's go. So here's the elevation. This is the front. So there's the front door. It's got a little covered. Entry to it. And you kind of see it from the side. Here is the. Electrical service coming into the building. It's mounted on the outside of the building. It's a big old box. For all the power that we need here. Then this is the west side. This is the other admin exit door that we needed per code. And we got a couple mechanical units out here, condensing units for air conditioning. So that's what it looks like. Go ahead, if you have a question.
So Dana, who's going to do the dirt work if the road department is weak? We have to go out for contract or how's that going to work?
That dirt work is part of this contract now. So that will be bid it as part of this contract.
When will we go out for that contract?
So. Let's see, how do I answer this? Brian is reviewing the. Legal documents, part of the bid process. So as soon as he has completed his review and we've made changes based on his recommendations and comments, then it can go out to bid. Currently, we could turn this set of plans into the billing department to start the plan review process. And if there are any corrections that would come through with that county review process. Then we could incorporate that into the bid set. If it happens quickly enough. But if not, then we can just add those comments into an addenda before it bids. So.
Dana, do you have a ETA on getting it out for bid?
If if we get a thumbs up from the county at any time, we can do it. I would say, I believe Brian indicated that he would have his comments back to me. This week, I believe, if I remember his timeline correctly. And probably take us a few days to make that adjustment and then we could, we could. Have that ready to go out to bid.
Good news.
Yes, we are, we are. We are waiting for Brian. He's a bit, he's a busy guy, so.
Light a fire under him.
Yeah, well, I can't like that.
That's our job. Light a fire, you better call.
Hey Dana, throw a question at you real quick. Nothing about structure. What color is the facility you're in? Do you know yet?
Well, we're going to pick that once we, once the metal building manufacturer is selected or whatever, whoever the general contractor uses. Then each metal building manufacturer has slightly different colors of metal that are available. And we will choose that when. We know who that manufacturer is.
Does we mean the commissioners?
Yes.
Thank you.
We as the group will have that selected. We will, we will not pick that insight will not pick that without your approval.
Thank you.
And that goes for all of the interior colors and finishes also. So we have given them some ideas. But we can't sole source it, nor do we want to sole source it. That's from a. Cost perspective, so. One thing that we did add while we're on this page. We did add some snow melt to the, to the roof overhang and a snow guard. To all of the eaves on the building. And we've moved all of the. Events and exhaust fans and everything that we can possibly move. To a sidewall and not have anything through the roof. With the exception of these three little pipes here up towards the ridge, which are. Events for the septic system or for the, yeah, for the sewer system. And we moved those, we placed those up close to the ridge, so. You'll have less chance of the snow pulling them off if it does slide. We don't really anticipate it to slide with a one in twelve roof slope. But as a precaution, we had them run the pipe. And exit the roof at the ridgeline.
So those on the very ends, are those snow cleats or that just?
Yes, this is a, well, this is a snow bar. It's a little fence. It's not cleats. My experience with cleats is they get ripped out. And now we got a hole in the roof. So this actually, there's a little bit of a detail here. There's a clamp that goes over the top of the, this is the profile of the ribs on the roof. And it clamps onto the topper, top part. And then the snow guard. Is up here.
Yeah, I've seen those before. It's just a pipe, a couple pipes, actually.
Yeah, this one, this one is a, is an aluminum bar. It is not a pipe, but it could be. What we have, based on the design on is it's just a flat bar about two inches high.
Okay. So Dana, on the front of the building, you guys have the electrical panel. I mean, I've been a home builder most of my life. I never wanted an electrical panel on the front of a building. Is that, does that bother you guys? You drive up an electrical panel?
Not on a commercial building.
That's what I figured you were going to say, but.
Runage building we did, we, I've got them right on the front of the building. I don't like them there, but.
Well, it is the, it is the most cost effective location for it. Fortunately or unfortunately, however you want to look at it. And that, you know, it's a, it's a fairly good sized box right here. There's a lot of power that needs to come in here.
The windows around the side, that's what I was looking around the side, but.
Eye line panel or something like that. My last one at Runage took me a year to get in. You just have to order them like right now. Takes forever to get those things.
It has changed quite a bit lately, and I haven't heard a lot of. Issues with getting electrical gear and our electrical engineer stays on top of all of that because he knows that issue. So he has specified particular types of panels and switchgear that. Are more readily available. You're not going to go to the store and buy this, but it's not, it's not sixty, sixty weeks out.
Yep, stay on top of that one. It bit me in the butt pretty good.
On this, we have, am I seeing three offices? Or is there four?
There are one, two, three offices and potentially. This, we call it storage right now, that could be an office in the future if need be. And then here are the. And then, and then the, there's two shop offices are moved in here. And outside of the maintenance bay and with Jeff and Stretch's comments, we moved those interior.
So that would be Stretch's office and Jeff's office?
I believe Jeff wants this office right here.
So Mickey's out front and then we have our. Lady that's doing our inventory and I can't remember her name off the top of my head. What's she? So Jeff, where, so Dan's office is down there, you've got an office. Is the other one for Dee? And then Stretch is in the garage. Where's Mickey at?
Mickey's right here. Dee's right here.
They're still going to be together there?
Yeah, Mickey and Dee are both right here. My office, Dan's office. Dan wants this one. That way my supervisor I have on the south end will have an office. Instead of be a computer in there for training for. Rotex.
Jeff, are you still moving the salt shed? You're going to do that or? Because it looks like.
I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing.
You, you guys aren't going to dig the hole the contractors are going to dig.
Move that.
What are you going to do with that gravel that comes out of that hole? Just go south?
I'll put it out on the south end of the pit. And red sand.
And then you've got enough stuff hauled in to sew it back in, right? I think the only other thing that I, and correct me if I'm wrong Dana, but we got to move the salt shed. Pretty quick.
Correct. Right now that we, we are still scheduled, that is still scheduled to be removed by, by others. Which others is particularly the county, but if we want to change that. We can do that. It'd take a little bit of time to change our notes and whatnot, but we could certainly do that. It's not that.
Is that a tear down or are you, can you get available lifts that salt?
Try to move it. Right now I don't have a place to put salt sand.
Is it a metal building or a pole building? I thought it was.
I think it's a wood frame building. Am I right, Jeff?
It's a pole building, yes, with siding.
And then does Steve, is there a building over on the corner that also has to be moved?
That's the one Idaho Power is going to be.
Idaho Power's moved that one.
The Con X is with.
Well, it sounds like you guys are moving forward, so we'll just keep going.
So I guess I, we need to decide, Jeff, are you going to take that shed out of there or do we need to put that back into the contract?
Take it out.
I don't know if you heard him Dana, he'll said he'll take it out.
Okay, all right.
Just go out there, see if we can.
Anything else? We're out of time.
And I would simultaneously do anything you can do. I'd get it into the building department, get your permit started, let them. Anything else that needs changed. That's my opinion.
Well, he's kind of waiting on Brian, but you know, we got to get moving here. We're going to run out of summer.
So, so commissioners, we can submit this plan. As it is for a plan review for the city. We just can't put it out to bid yet without the, without the documents from Dan yet. But we could, we could turn it into the city for plan review at any time.
For the county?
To the, excuse, excuse me, to the county. Thank you.
Yeah, I say go for it, Dana.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it for now.
Thank you Dana.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate the update.
Getting exciting.
Hey, we're going to move on down to our agenda. This is an action item. This is a joint meeting. The Valley County Wide EMS District. You guys, you got some discussions on the ambulance cost. And then an update, I don't know Travis or Ron who's leading the meeting, but go on up to the mic, state your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, I, maybe we could propose just having them sit. Was that, okay, sorry.
Absolutely move that mic over. There you go. Come on up. Ron, you can come on up too.
Good morning.
We heat these seats, so.
Preheated.
We put you in the hot seat.
Hot seat, great. President here with the Valley County Wide EMS District is myself, Travis Smith, Chairperson of the Valley Wide Ambulance District. Ron Julian, Commissioner, and our Secretary Treasurer, Amanda Kivany. Thank you for having us here today, Commissioners. I guess the first thing is we'll just go briefly through an update where we're at on the ambulance district. As you guys are probably well aware, we had another initiative for a levy override, did not pass, was close again.
Close, close, close.
We are in the thralls of making a decision of how and when to run that. We've consulted with, that's always weird to me. We've consulted with consultants. But we've had not just McKenzie that we used last time, but another local. Campaign professional and one out of Washington to see where we could kind of, you know. Shore up our weak points. They're not cheap, the one out of Washington, we're looking at like sixty thousand dollars. Obviously, we don't have that money, so that's off the table. So Erin Greaves is the other one where she's willing to work with us. So we're going to try and push for that. We've got to make a decision on whether to run a permanent. A temporary or, and then when. We're not going to collect funds until January twenty twenty-six, so we kind of almost have a free bite at the apple, but. We get concerned about the nuances of voter fatigue and, and things like that and general election dynamics. So we're trying to make a decision on that. We voted to move forward in November, actually, but how, what, what level or what timeframe we're going to do that in permanent or temporary. In the meantime, we've really been collaborating as three districts, the EMS districts have put their EMS directors together. I serve on that committee, kind of like the old. I think you'll remember the Valley County Wide Advisory Council. We put that back together. Doing some cost sharing, things like bringing, we've been trying to get it done, but it's happening, you know, whether it be common medication ordering and supplies. There, there are little savings here and there, but, but they are savings. We also have a budget committee put together and they're building as best as budget as we can. We're finding some streamlines in our medical directorship. We voted to have one medical director for the entire county so that we can have. One system of operations that is the same across the board. Yep, we have Dr. Urban.
Come on up Doc, have a seat.
Yeah.
I'm going to be like.
Yeah, you're good. They're cracking. These guys stay on time. But we're meeting as that advisory committee and the recommendation was to have one medical director. We're trying to get things just the same across the country. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the fire districts are still, as the contractors of the district are still really working collaboratively together to make things work. As I understand, late, all districts are staffed fully and. That's where you generally one Jenga piece away from that coming loose just because of, you know, you know, the housing woes up here and recruitment and retention, but. We're doing pretty good that way. We are getting busier. That's, there's no doubt about that. Boy, Cascade had, or sorry, Donley had a call over the holiday weekend. We had all ambulances in the county and Donley's district and there was four calls going on at one time. It's just getting, you know, we, we can't prepare for, you know, the worst case scenario, but it's just getting more and more. Revelant. So we've got to, we're trying to fix that and you guys are well aware why that, why that's happening. So. I guess in the sum of that was our budget committee was going to wrap up their numbers this week. We, we know that the county doesn't have. A lot of money out there, but we are going to come back and bake for more money, just so you know. Clerk Miller has told us there is none, but we, we feel strongly that we need to come back and at least put it on the record that we've exhausted that option. So. And so it'll be on the record and that's by advisement of our attorney and everybody else. So we don't think that it's a, we're just, you know. Doing something to be contentious with the understanding that going on the record of having asked for Pilt or ARPA or whatever's out there. And you guys, you know, establishing that there is none, that's going to be an important piece of our puzzle and saying. You know, we're trying, we're exhausting all options. So we just wanted to let you know that's going to happen. Obviously not an action item and we'll be coming back in the next couple, three weeks for that discussion with you guys.
So Travis?
Yes, sir.
What is the option that you have on an override limit?
So our options right now, you know, we, we have the timeline option. That would be either November or May. November, you know, like I said before, either one of those options pushes any funding if passed back to twenty twenty-six just as tax revenues and rolls go. And then we have a fifty percent temporary override, which would provide for a two-year funding source that would make us whole. We, or we have the permanent override that would go into perpetuity. And so those are things we're balancing. The, the. Temporary is a fifty percent majority and the permanent is the sixty-six and two thirds percent, so.
I want to correct that just for the record because we've got the newspaper listening, so it would not make you whole. It would give you additional revenue. Make you whole, your budget needs to be set. So we know exactly what it is that you need to be functioning.
Yeah, thank you.
For the level of service.
It would make the fire districts whole and what they're asking for this year, if we could get that down and near to year. You know, we, we did, we are taking lots of feedback on our levy initiatives, Commissioner. And trying to pivot, you know, the first stab that we had, they're like, the citizens basically came back and said, you don't even know what you're spending this on and it's going to be higher. It's hard to come up with that number of what we're actually going to spend and we, we have to this time because that was consistent feedback. We got that number down in the second push to somewhere around three point eight something million to run the, the ambulance district. On the levy rate we set, we probably going to trim that back a little bit more and then take out the fourth ambulance and do some things with that as the budget committee kind of really sharpens the pencil to, to get that there, but. We know that just as things stand, it's no surprise to anybody that they're underfunded as it is and it's being subsidized by the fire districts. And we can, we can want and want and want, but until the voters say that this is a necessity. We did have a good joint meeting last week, as we're saying, with all the fire districts. It was well attended by all. We had great comments and input to see where the fire districts is. They are somewhat of the, the highest stakeholder in this because they do contract the service from us. And they gave us some suggestions to do. I guess one of the things that we would, we'll probably come back and ask those of you that are going to be around for a while. Um, and they gave us some suggestions to do. I guess one of the things that we would, will probably come back and ask those of you that are gonna be around for a while. Maybe even you, because we're not necessarily, but we're gonna need some, some public, uh, support and that might be a video. That we put on a YouTube page or a webpage of, um, L even you, understanding the issue for years and years to say, look. I support this, you know, in a public manner that we can get that out there. We need influential people, uh, that have, um, integrity and have been. A part of this, uh, building and trying to solve this problem. Uh, we need them to go on the record and those that are uncommitted, especially when we have the weak point, what Stephen's not here, but the, the south part of the county here. Uh, in Round Valley and down in Smiths Ferry tends to be our weak point. And I think there's just a lack of trust because we're brand new. And they need to find trust somewhere. So having influential people, um, speak to the necessity is gonna be important.
Travis, I think it's, first of all, I think it's awesome. You guys are looking to pare that down. You said it's around three point eight. I think that's gonna be a big selling point that hey, we're, we're, we're to the bone with this, this pass. I really hope you guys go for a permanent and not a temporary. Cause you're gonna go right through this again and then you're gonna have to wait another two years to get that funding and it's just gonna. Kick the can down the road and we gotta stop doing that. But I will do anything you guys need me to do as far as public support letters.
So.
All that kind of stuff.
Commissioner, you're gonna be in a good position for that because you can go on the record as a private citizen.
Right, well, and I do it privately with folks all the time.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
But to more of a public statement, I'm willing to do that for sure. And I really appreciate you guys stepping up and taking this issue on. It's one we couldn't, couldn't figure out either.
Yeah, we're beginning to understand why you guys wanted to. It's definitely a tar baby. Um, you know, we've lost two, uh, override requests, as you know. Uh, where we went for a permanent override. Um, I personally have been. Well, in contradistinction to what you said, I'll have been pushing for this next override to be. A temporary, partly because I think it gives us the opportunity to get up and running. Um, it gives us the opportunity to create an EMS commission, uh, that is self-funding. Uh, not whole by any stretch of the imagination, but bare bones to get us up and running and. Get this thing fleshed out so that when we come back in two years for hopefully a permanent levy request at that point. Uh, we, we know exactly what we're dealing with. We know exactly what our budgets are. Exactly what the separation between the fire services and EMS services are. How we're gonna keep those somewhat separate because people get concerned about the fact that we're intermingling funds and all of that. Uh, we want it, so I think there is an advantage at this point. Also, we, quite frankly, we need a win. Um, because if we keep going back for permanent override requests, um, I'm concerned that both of the requests ended up. The vote was almost identical. I think the same folks that vote against any tax, um, increase are gonna vote against it again. Uh, I think the November election has, is gonna be obviously well subscribed and well attended. Uh, and we may see a different mix, uh, in the, uh, in, in, in the voter mix before that. But I think it's important that we get a win, that we get up and running, that we get this thing functioning. Uh, and I think a two-year, uh, temporary levy override gives us that option. I think if we try the same thing over and over again, we end up with the Albert Einstein rule of the definition of insanity. Um, I, I honestly think if we do it again, especially in November, we'll end up with probably a, you know, sixty percent failure. Um, we would have won both elections had it been a temporary override.
And I don't know why the legislature made it that way. I just never have understood that. It's majority rules should be the, the ethics of all elections, but.
Thank. Yeah, I think they just wanted to make it harder for tax increases to occur.
It does.
Uh, and, uh, that's, that's what it is and we have, we have to live in that world.
But I really appreciate Travis's idea. We need to show the voters, this is what this money's gonna buy. Cause it's, it's an interesting dilemma because if you think about it, all the funding is going to fire, but all the demands on the EMS side of it. You don't have that many house fires up here, but we have so many ambulance calls that somehow we gotta. Congel all this into one fund, but I don't know if the code will let you do that.
Yeah, and I just debriefed Dr. Kenny this morning, as it turns out. Um, was talking about some other issues. We also talked about the issue of volumes in the, in the, uh. St. Luke's McCall Emergency Room and it's been the biggest summer we've ever had in the emergency room. And you saw the article, uh, or the editorial in Star News this past week, uh, that, that by Garrett that said. You know, we, we were really, really razor thin. But I think. If we need a sharp pencil, we need a precise budget. We need it to be as lean and mean as it can be. Um, and, uh, and then we, we get started, we get up and running and we get going. Um, eventually we're gonna probably need more for another ambulance and, and so on. Um, because we're growing like crazy and volumes are increasing and whatnot, but we need the public to understand what it is we're doing. What it is we're trying to accomplish. And then I think maybe we'll, I'm hopeful we'll get more support.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent on that. Really just feel strongly you guys should do a temporary. And the reason that I say that too is the state's having this conversation. And there's funding mechanisms they're looking at. So if the taxpayers feel like we're gonna plug the hole for now. We're going to look at this statewide and see what the state comes up with. There's also conversation where like UTV fees, they put two or three dollars on every UTV permit. There's a conversation going around about putting that on a ski pass. Because you guys are at those ski resorts more than anything else. You know, how do we find a different funding mechanism? Cause that's what I'm hearing from taxpayers. We're tired of paying for the visitors that are coming. And so if we could come up with a user fee, you gotta call them when you're on the ski slope. That would actually help. So if they'd put a buck, two bucks on every ski pass and the industry itself would back that, I think the legislature would take a strong look at that. And there's another funding mechanism. So it's not just all on the back of the taxpayer. There's other ways to accumulate funds for this.
User fees. We're trying to do everything we can with user fees.
Yeah.
The one's coming up the hill.
It makes sense.
Using it.
And we've talked about at our most recent, re- recent meeting, the option of having the EMS services have a surcharge. For non-Vally County residents on the actual bill for transport. Um, and that's, I think, legal and. Another potential sources of funding.
So we gotta, how, what's the feeling on the impact fees for?
Well, you know, right now, you know, we're, we got our eye on the prize, honestly, Commissioner, and so we haven't even discussed at the. Ambulance level, this impact fee. It comes up and what are the fire districts gonna do with that portion that's carved in there for? The ambulance district. We, we need to get this fixed. We need to have that discussion. Those haven't rolled forward, but as an ambulance district. We haven't even had a conversation about it. So, um, because, uh, we, we've got to fix.
Solution anyway.
It's not gonna be the long-term solution. Um, I would say adding, and all of us agree unequivocally what, uh, uh, Dr. Urban has said. And here's, here's the crazy part is, um, we all, us three, think we need to get this hot potato, you know, out of the oven for a little while and build some trust. Uh, Mr. Gigray does not, he, we can, we can turn around and may and go for a permanent if we want. Um, there's not a timeline set on that. Um, but for all the reasons that were mentioned, the fire districts, however, um, they, they want to solve long-term. They want to be able to, you know, hire people, give raises. We understand their problem. But this is gonna, a, a long-term problem. It's gonna take patience and a long-term solution and, and they're supportive whichever way we go. So. We're just trying to balance that out, uh, and we'll get there. Um, I just had a thought. I just want to digress for one minute. Clerk Miller, public appreciation. Our attorney tells us every time he sends an email, text, or we're in a meeting after he has dealt with you, how appreciative, uh, it is of you and your professionalism. Just wanted to publicly recognize that. It's been on my.
Pretty good guy.
Yeah, um.
Best clerk in Idaho.
Bill Gigray deals with a lot of them. And I don't get public praise like that from him, but that man right there does. So you should pat yourself on that. Um, and give him a raise.
Be up to the taxpayers and there is constitutional things.
So let's, Travis, let's talk a little bit about the ambulance fund itself.
Yeah.
I know the county contributed two hundred fifty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Is that working out or you need more, how much more and all that kind of stuff?
So I have the, um, the current invoice for the ambulance bill and, and I know they've been in communications with, uh, Clerk Miller. It's about, um. About twenty-two thousand dollars over budget, um, for a multitude of reasons I can't explain, but Mike Bertrand could. He's been, uh. Ordering that. So we ordered it at that price. Cost of everything has gone up, um, for, for multiple reasons, some different change orders, how we purchased it. Uh, through a, uh, we got a decreased price by going through a, a purchasing agreement group, um, the SABE group. Uh, they have a fee that was not considered in the original bid. It wasn't much. It was like five hundred dollars, but, um, so we need about twelve or twenty-two thousand, one hundred seventeen. We'll give that to Clerk Miller when we're done there. Um, and, and to make that ambulance build.
How do they come with the, I don't know what you call it, the lifts and all that stuff too?
No, unfortunately, no. The cost of these units are getting crazy, crazy. Um, that's initial. We don't, I don't have the number in front of me, but going off, uh, November's, uh, numbers, when I can remember, we're looking about forty-eight thousand dollars to put that in there. Amanda and I were just talking about that as we were sitting back there. You know, we, we are gonna have to, um, as, as the fire districts and the ambulance district, we're just gonna have to try to move equipment and then maybe replace. It's awkward because of the way we purchased and who purchased it and who has title to this equipment, but Donley has the oldest ambulance. Um, it's, uh, two thousand three Ford or something like, I said, it's a seven-three, so it's before that, but. They have equipment on that that we may have to somehow figure out in, in our government agreements, how to move that over to the two thousand fourteen Ford, which in theory is the most reliable of the vehicles. So. We'll solve that on the operational end of it. Uh, it doesn't have that auto-loading cotton stuff in there and we're just gonna have to get creative on how to do that because there simply. Is not money for a ten thousand dollar CPR machine, a forty thousand dollar monitor, just a fully outfit. This thing is gonna be another thing near a hundred grand.
It will be in your name now, moving.
Yes, we're gonna start putting that.
Purchased in your name.
Well, we haven't detailed that out, but that's where it needs to be.
Do you wanna do a motion now for that or do you?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and EMS Commissioners, this is where it's a little bit odd because the money that we have is technically your guys' money.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know if, uh, the Valley County Board of County Commissioners really needs to make a motion to allow you to. Expend money that already belongs to the EMS district. That, I, I guess that transition of those funds hasn't taken place until the end of September. I guess. Are you asking for that additional money now or after September?
So, uh, I'll get back to your question. We're under the understanding from our attorney that that money was secured. Uh, under the old district and is the old districts and under our operational agreement, our, our dissolution and, and reforming the district. That all funds belonging to the current district will be transferred after the audit of that past district. So he believes that funding's still yours.
So after the fiscal year twenty twenty-four audit?
Yes.
Which the twenty twenty-four audit won't occur until twenty twenty-five?
Understood. That, no, that is literally what he has said. Is it'll be sometime between the end of the fiscal year. Due to the fact that there's still gonna be outstanding bills, right, that you guys have to account for.
Yeah, the only other bills that we are gonna have right now are gonna be the payments to the fire districts that we have to make.
Um, yeah.
Once we get the next tax turnover, um, we will be making our final payment to the fire departments for their contract. There will not be any other payments coming out of that except for payments that are owed to the new, uh, taxi industry.
Doug, wasn't there a slush fund? At one time in that?
January first is when we were.
There's no slush fund, but yes, there'll, there'll be a remaining amount that, uh.
Reserve.
Reserve, that, that the EMS district will have the ability, again, this is where it's gonna get a little confusing. Who has authority on that reserve? Is it this board or is it the new EMS board?
So, yeah.
I will share that right now. There's three hundred and ninety thousand, uh, that, um. Is currently in that fund, but we still have to make the two hundred and twenty thousand dollar payments to the, uh, each fire district. I anticipate there will probably be two hundred thousand dollars in the reserve that the new EMS district will have, have access to.
So Doug, didn't we set aside already as commissions, set aside two hundred fifty thousand for that?
That's ARPA.
That's ARPA.
This board.
For that.
That's correct. This board has already committed two hundred fifty thousand dollars of the Valley County ARPA funds to fund a new ambulance. Yeah, that is, money is available and ready to be paid. When it's needed. I don't know if that, they are needing that upon delivery, if they're needing that, um, at half during build. And I guess we would just need some guidance from.
I can answer that. Clerk Miller, it's, it's, uh, it's on delivery.
On delivery, okay. So that answers kind of your question, your original question. What are you asking for today or tomorrow? We're letting you be aware of it so we can make a budgetary pivot to know that that is coming due and that amount will be due at that same time.
Doug, can we take that out of this reserve fund?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, you should keep in mind that they're gonna come back in a few weeks and ask.
For millions.
A lot more.
Well, we don't have that. We do have twenty-two thousand that you can spend. But it sounds like that there would be the forty-eight in there also, Doug, if there's two hundred in reserve.
It's gonna be close. I mean, we, we can take a close look at it to determine if you guys need the, the cot. Is that, is that correct or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we can look at that. I didn't realize there was enough funding for stuff like that.
There might be.
Yeah, that'd be.
Assuming though by the end of our fiscal year this year, we should be zeroed out.
You should be. And if Doug Miller, right, if Clerk Miller is comfortable that there's no outstanding bills, all that, um, that. The attorney says is that generally speaking, it's after the close of the fiscal year and after the audit. Be, so that we know that all, you know, if the auditor comes in and finds a discrepancy that you still owe somebody thirty thousand dollars, where now are you gonna get that money? Because you've transferred it over. So that's why he talks in terms of the audit, we'll find those discrepancies. If you're comfortable, then.
I think.
Sorry, no, go ahead. I was.
Keep the continuity added in there.
That's what I would propose.
Whatever the other costs.
Maybe what we would, what, what Valley County will do or what the Valley County, um, EMS district will do is keep maybe ten thousand dollars in that fund. The audit's three thousand. I, I know, um, firsthand, there's no seven thousand dollars of additional expenses that. This, uh, that we would have. So I would feel confident transferring whatever balance i- is. After September thirtieth over to the Valley County Wide EMS District.
Okay.
I would recommend that the Commissioners make a motion to do that though.
And I think that's all we're asking. So that kind of solves this question on this MS. You're aware of it. There's a, 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 a point of confusion in who's gonna pay that. Um, when's delivery due? It's not this year.
Yeah, yeah, we're a year and a half.
So it, it's kind of.
Kidding me?
Oh yeah, they were two-year build time on these things, so.
Oh my goodness. So let me ask a question then. Doug, we could probably transfer the ARPA funds into this, this pool. And then give you guys the, the funds to pay for it.
Could do that.
What I want to make sure is though it's not under an old name. So when that bill comes up. That it's expected that we're gonna pay it.
Well, it will be. We're gonna have to do some work on the background with the vendor because right now the bills should be, they, they generally come to us and they get forwarded to Clerk Miller. We tried to pivot before I left. To have them come straight here.
Yeah, unfortunately, the, I, I'm a bit concerned because this bill that we're showing an invoice for is for the McCall Fire Department.
Yeah.
And I think, I, I don't know, I would recommend if you can, get that changed to the Valley County Wide EMS District. So then it, I guess technically would belong, I, I mean, I, I don't, yeah, just for. I would make that recommendation, but.
I understand. Thanks for pointing that out. I, I understand the background there. So, um.
So the two, the two hundred seventy-two thousand, that could go up after a year and a half?
No, no, we're locked now.
We're locked.
Yeah, we're locked now.
Okay.
So, um, from the time that we purchased the chassis, which was a separate commitment from the other thing, we saw this increase. And there was. There was requirements placed on us in build specifications from the state and safety issues that come along in that timeframe. Now, once it's in build production, that we can't change anything at that, well, minor things at that point. So some of this was. We needed a change for operational purposes that we own, some of it, the, the federal requirements of. You know, um, encumbered us with, there's, there's different reasons why it went up and some of it was material cost between chassis securing and committing.
Travis, there's no old ambulance that's going away. You're still gonna need, use all the older ambulances as well?
Well, I think we can surplus, I mean, this is a discussion with Donley because they are titled that, that piece of equipment, but I think that we need to figure out where. We need to have a reserve apparatus in each station and then we kind of have talked about having this floater reserve that can go anywhere when one of those goes down. And we just look at it as a trickle down, you know, get rid of the, the oldest piece of equipment or maybe the least reliable ones sometimes. And, um, and then the fire districts will have to come to terms with which one that is and where to transfer that piece of equipment. Donley tends to have more room than. Donley tends to have more room than everybody else, so it makes sense that it is there, so. But yeah, I think we'll surplus a piece of equipment. Uh, and then if we add a Ford worth ambulance, we can bring that back into whole service, so. And then we won't have a reserve for a while, but we can shift equipment around from.
Um, the reason I bring that up is there, with perpetuum, what's going on in Yellow Pine? Is there a consideration about station one of them out at Yellow Pine?
Well, yeah.
Or that ambulance went away, right?
Yeah, yeah. You know, there there's a certainly a possibility out there. Uh, we are in discussions with Perpetua to have a meeting with them. Um, I, we haven't set any firm dates for that or anything. So when we know better what their needs are and we collaborate more, um, we can talk about that. Again, the same issues that faced uh the old district faced the new district in staffing that ambulance and getting people out there. Uh, whether we park an ambulance out there and how we maintain it and keep the preventive maintenance done on it is gonna be the big challenge. Uh, maybe perpetual will have people out there and that'll be part of the agreement that we can use. Uh, I, it's something we can entertain that that we have to cross that bridge, but uh just to get rid of the MS, to get rid of it, we're not, we're not there yet.
Good.
So.
I thought that they were doing their own anyways, so. But I I would just really strongly recommend you guys buy this in your name. I mean, those assets should have always, in my opinion, been going into the ambulance district's name and not the fire district's name.
Yeah, and that begs the question, Commissioner Mopin, is that, is that one of the things, one of our goals as we get the EMS um commission up and running and funded and so on, will be to look more closely at economies of scale. That one of the things that will help sell this to the voters, I think, is the fact that we're going to, by having all the districts consolidated into one commission, um, that we'll be able to find ways of funding things like equipment and so on um that can be moved around and used for the entire district rather than this being a matter of three separate fire, fire districts running the thing. Um, and I'm very strongly in favor of that. I think the single medical director was the easy loaf hanging fruit on this, but there are many other things we're gonna be looking for to create some efficiencies at having this as as a individual effort. And I do think that any equipment purchased should be purchased by the EMS commission, by the EMS district, not by the individual fire districts.
Yeah, you should be able to do tax anticipation notes too to purchase that.
Yeah, I think we're, I mean, there's lots of nuances of how we're, whether it be protocols, supplies, we're just coming together much cleaner. Uh, Cooney County is probably the best example of of an ambulance district that contracts with fire services, but is really its own operating entity with its own chief officer and kind of runs the show, right? But yet um Post Falls or Cooney Fire and Rescue, Coeur d'Alene, they they each house an ambulance and run it and really have a, there's a subtle but distinct, I know that doesn't make a lot of sense, separation between the two. So um I think that's where we're trying to model ourselves after, not like Idaho Falls, Bingham, uh Bingham County, Bonneville County, where they just hand the keys to the kingdom over to the fire departments. Um, and and I think that's unhealthy and unsustainable. Adams County is facing this right now with with Meadows Valley. Um, and you know, there's there's somewhat of a hostage situation right there, so um we we wanna work.
Interesting to see what the state comes up with. I mean, there's in-depth conversation going on right now with EMS.
Yeah, that, the, you know, when it comes to EMS and funding, you know, being on the fire chiefs board, we're very in tune with that. Uh, when it comes to where and how to fund EMS in general, it's, nobody wants it. It's the redheaded stepchild. They're not gonna put it in IOEM as long as um uh General Ritchie's there or whatever his title is now. He does not want this. Um, however, we have the GMT that's coming up, right, the Medicaid Medicare gap funding, and that should be resolved probably next year, and that could be a big number for us. I mean, we're talking a couple hundred, maybe as much as four hundred thousand dollars a year. So this temporary gives that a little time to percolate. Um, I've been doing this thirty one years, Commissioner Mopin. Uh, nobody likes EMS at the state for some reason. I think it's because it's been poorly managed for a long time, so I think it's a pipe dream to think that they'll fix this. Um, but hope is always there.
There's a lot of commissioners that don't want it to go to IOEM either. However, it's that that's a whole separate conversation. If there's a problem there, we need to fix that conversation.
Yeah, absolutely.
But this, I mean, it should be. I I don't care if it's you wants or not. I mean, it should be under him. That's why this is.
Well, let, I think.
Should reside.
Then, well, you, I think, kind of off on a tangent here, then EMS needs to be declared an essential service.
But they're working on it.
Essential service, then it's gonna be a lot easier to shoehorn it into the Office of Emergency Management. And when they start really looking at the ESF functions, they'll realize that it does belong under IOEM, which I agree. I don't disagree with that at all. It's not a helping or issue. And, but the bureaucracy rolls slow. We gotta fund today, so. But two years might give us the time.
That's what I think is the transition.
We're gonna run out of time. I guess my next question is, how is the cash flowing out? Do you guys have enough cash to operate and do your PR stuff for this election that you're gonna bring up?
Great question. Um, we we called the the district board, fire districts boards on the carpet to help us fund this, so it wasn't just the ambulance district. McCall committed right away. Um, just kudos to them. Uh, Sadie said, we'll just pay for it if that's what needs to be done, so we think we'll get the cost of the campaign covered. We're gonna have to put a little in there. It's our skin too, you know, we've paid for it. And I think Donley and Cascade will come around. It won't be as much. They're much, they operate on more of a shoestring budget than than what McCall does.
It sounds like you have some funding.
We have some. Um, we're gonna not tell the districts that because we're not on the record. Um, so yes, that's a great question. I think we're gonna be okay. What we're gonna need from you guys honestly is is support, vocal outward support.
Absolutely. Just let us know where and when.
I know that you did have our support last time.
You did, you did. I'm not saying we didn't, but we come up with some good ideas that we're gonna put people uh in the public talking. To hear Travis Smith talk about why we need it, well, you've lived here five years, Travis. What do you know about Valley County? But to talk with Elt about it, that that's meaningful. He's lived here his whole life, right? So I, that's why we need local faces in there. We need firefighters' faces. We need ambulance personnel faces. We need Dr. Kenny's face. Uh, we're pivoting there and that's why we're asking now. Not that I'm trying to assert that you guys didn't support us. We're just gonna take a more um bombastic approach to it.
Well, I just remember the days when it was formed.
Yeah.
In the beginning, and I think the ask was around two hundred and fifty thousand. And I'm going, that doesn't even buy you half an ambulance. I mean, they started out too small in the beginning.
Right, and we don't wanna do that again.
We don't wanna do that again because the three percent cap's what you can do. Pretty soon you're so far behind it.
Your institutional knowledge has the ability to sway those voters. Greg, were you gonna say something there?
Uh, no, I've, it's been, it's been covered. We're good.
Ron's been.
And when do you expect to come back? A couple of weeks, a month? Get on the agenda as far as your ask?
Let's say two weeks at 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 the minimum.
We have no money, so don't worry about it.
We, Amanda's done a great job communicating with Clerk Miller. We we understand that and you guys understand that it's it's just going through the, I mean, I don't wanna say that publicly, so. But we have to ask, right? We have to ask in the public forum officially, not just, we're warning you, we're coming now, but we're gonna ask. And you guys are gonna say, most likely you're gonna say no. There's always a hope that you'll find, you know, win the lottery or something. But at that point, we have checked the box and said, voters, there are no other options. And we understand where your budget is.
So all the priority of where the money goes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and one way that you all can be helpful in terms of public support for this um is to help explain the rationale for why this was done. Because one thing we definitely ran into is why is there now an EMS commission? Is that just more bureaucracy? Is it just whatever? If if the nuances of that, uh, which you all understand as well as anybody, um, will be, it'll be very useful with the next campaign to have you make public statements about why that was done. What 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 the value of a separate EMS commission is.
Because people were thinking, well, it was fine before. What's changed?
They say exactly that, is that if if you, if you were providing EMS services before, why are you suddenly asking for another levy or levy override? And why does this have to be a separate thing? And is this just not the growth of government? Which is an evil word in the state of Idaho and most places.
We have to make sure people understand it wasn't fine before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is full transparency. We're we're taking all the, all the smoke and mirrors away.
Yeah.
I'd have to fund somebody.
Realistic about what needs to happen. And that's why the state declaring uh EMS services an essential service and then moving in that direction, I believe is the way ultimately to go. But in the meantime, we gotta provide the service to the residents of Valley County and to our visitors. And we'll find ways of funding with respect to the visitors, although when people ask me about that, I always say, well, the plate, the Airbnbs that they're staying in, hotels, they're all paying taxes and none of them gets a homeowner's exemption. Um, and so they're paying even more taxes than you are. Um, um, they're paying it secondarily through the rental that they pay, but there is funding coming in for people that come up here to stay. So it's not completely unfunded by the visitors.
We got about five minutes left. Uh, Ron, do you have anything you wanna add?
You've been really quiet. I loved it.
He's our quiet guy.
He's a quiet guy. He's thinker.
Well, I think the next election, no matter which option we pursue, is about finding money to relieve the burden on the fire district's budgets, but it's also about establishing some trust and confidence in this board at the property taxpayer level. We haven't done that yet because we've repeated what already failed. You know, instead of three fire chiefs you got up here talking to you about this, you got us three. The problem hasn't changed too much in a third of the public's mind. So we, we know there's overwhelming support for EMS. It's well over fifty percent. I think we gotta ride that into the future and not try to re-educate folks that don't want a permanent override.
At this time.
You gotta build that trust and confidence. I think, yeah, I think we, in two years, we could get a permanent override. If we prove our worth and we prove that we are working hard to be efficient and so on. Also, if we weren't paying Travis so doggone much to do this.
I've heard he's got another job. He's setting up a whole nother district up on top of a mountain.
Yeah, you know, the pay here, I mean, it's causing me some tax liability issues, so.
Saw your name up there. I've been working up there for a year and a half, so.
That was a shit yourself. No, it's, it's going well.
Well, thanks you guys for your energy and your effort. We knew this was gonna be a difficult one when we handed it off and I kind of felt along that they'll be back in here looking for some funds and if we got them, we'll share them. If we don't, we can't, but we'll look at it at that time. I know Doug's gears are already turning. I can hear him clear over here. What we can do to find some more funds, but uh thank you guys, all of you and gals for your work and your effort and and all you can do is try.
The answer's always no if you don't ask.
That's right. That's right.
And to all the commissioners, I have it on the agenda for August fifth at ten AM. That will work. And if it doesn't work, just let me know and.
Thank you.
Hey.
Thanks, guys. Stay cool. Stay off the roads during peak travel times.
Last night it was beautiful outside. Cool breeze, no mosquitoes.
I took a nap on my deck for an hour last night.
It was great.
Thanks a lot.
Hey. Thank you.
Good seeing you guys.
Thanks, Greg.
Okay, our next agenda item is, this is an action item. This is a frost property management development agreement negotiation. Cindy, come on up.
Is Frost here?
I called him. He's on. He said he'd be here at ten forty five.
We'll wait a few more minutes before we get started. Yeah, if you wanna mute, Doug, we'll take a really quick break and then try and get back here in a few minutes.
Jonathan was supposed to be at the last meeting for the development agreement. And when I got back to my office, there was a note that said he wasn't able to make it. And so I thought it was more appropriate for him to negotiate with the board. I don't feel comfortable negotiating with the board on his behalf.
Oh, shouldn't have to.
I'm sure you, that's not.
If he doesn't show up today, we'll cancel him and redo it again.
That's what I'm thinking too, Jeff, is we'll just postpone this until he can be firm.
Twelve more minutes.
Yeah.
Same boat, Cindy, is it's not our negotiation at this point. He won't say, yeah, that sounds good, and then he'll say no, or he says no.
I see nobody's, we don't know that.
Me and Cindy are stuck in the middle going, what are we supposed to do?
He he said he's almost a little daughter.
Missed his time, so.
He'll be here. Lot of traffic out there.
Can we go ahead and?
Can we do the eleven o'clock one, Cindy, and then come back to this?
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay, so we're gonna postpone the ten forty five and move on down our agenda to the eleven o'clock. This is an action item. This is a request to reclassifying RV site from a home site. Joanne Miller, is that correct? Joanne, will you come to the mic, please, and state your name and the town you live in, just for the record?
Hey, I'm Mary Joanne Slifka Miller. I live in Primeville, Oregon.
Okay.
And uh I just. And I just got a notice that you designated my property as a home site. What is the criteria for a home site?
Where's your home site?
It's on 83 acres on West Mountain, 2249 West Mountain Road. I do have an RV and I go back and forth from Primeville here. I've been doing this since my parents died. I've been doing this 16 years.
I think this is.
It reached the point that I had to have power for, to even come to the school reunions. That's what started all of this, so that I could come to the school reunions. But I had a CPAT machine and I have a heart monitor. I have to have power. So about 13, about 13 years ago, an electrician from Cascade and Idaho Power went through that. I've got 110 extension line to my RV, to my RV site, and it's hooked on to my neighbor's power pole. I do have a meter so that my power is not charged to them. I don't have my own power pole.
Then you got a notice from the assessor that it's not an RV site, it's now a home site?
They put me as a home site.
Because of the power?
I guess. I don't have water. I don't have septic.
And you're asking it to be reverted back to RV site?
Go back to reforestation and agriculture. It's just timber and agriculture.
And you said you had how many acres?
I have 83.
So did they take one acre of that and make that a home site?
A home site.
Because of the power?
Because I've got power. Apparently that's what it is.
No sewer, no septic, no water, no well?
No, I have a pond upon the hill that my dad built, Doug, and it's to irrigate. And I keep that running because I have water rights and I have to keep that running, but it's not potable. It was many years ago. So I buy bottled water and I get water, drinking water from Huckleberry Campground with the permission of the camp hosts and the ranger.
Okay, I think I know where you're at now. Were you related to Joe Slifka?
I'm his daughter.
Oh, my gosh.
Your aunt Jean and I graduated together in 1993. I've been looking at you and I've decided you look like a lot of me.
You're going way back now.
I just turned 93.
Well, congratulations. That's awesome.
And I still drive back and forth by myself.
Good for you.
I told Debbie, who takes my trailer up into storage, that.
Can you?
This is a BOE issue. This is not an issue for us.
No. Let me see if I get, I'm gonna call the assessor and see if she can come up and help us with this. Because I think this is something we can do.
You're the right one to answer this.
I don't know if she's here. She might be on vacation.
When these things happen within the county, we, there's a certain timeframe that you have to have this discussion with the assessor's office.
I missed that because.
Fortunately, that's, I mean, this is state code. This is law. And so we can't, we can't make decisions as Board of County Commissioners. We have to be the Board of Equalization and that has to be done through the assessor's office. There's a very specific law and guideline that has to be followed and certain timeframes within the state that this has to occur.
And that was impossible for me.
Did you, when you discovered this, did you let the assessor know you wanted to appeal this? Or did you talk?
Yes.
You remember who you talked to?
I've been talking to Sue Lieber. I called her on the phone as soon as I got this from Primeville. And I, this is my fourth trip here at the courthouse.
Sue, I think, is out on vacation this week.
For me?
She's on vacation this week.
Who is?
She just finished BOE last week and so she's, I'm trying to think, do you remember anybody else that handled your case?
I talked to Gabby.
Yep. Yeah, Gabby's in Doug's office.
I talked to Sue and Gabby.
Sherry makes a very good point. There's a process that you have to appeal that assessment. And we just got through doing all those here the last two or three weeks. Apparently you didn't get that message. So there's a way you can appeal that, then it comes before us and we can do that. I'm just wondering if we can take an appeal after.
Sue didn't tell me those things.
That's what I was wondering, too.
I'm going home Friday and that will be three weeks I've been here.
Did you get evaluation with your assessment when this happened? Did she say what that tax is gonna be?
Let's call and see if there's anybody down there.
This is all I've gotten is.
Doug, are you walking?
Assessment notes.
Okay, when you come down, take a look.
May have to wait till next June.
And the amount of the taxes is not the issue.
There she is.
Issue.
Here's Sue, Doug, or Elton.
Oh, she's here.
I tried to call you back.
Oh. Basically, she went on and is here, I think she meant to appeal that.
Well, she didn't appeal by the 4th Monday in June, for one. For two, even if she had, okay. So there's an RV hookup on the parcel and when we were, our team without doing reappraisal last year, they found the RV hookup. It has electricity only, but as you know, for everybody throughout the county, if you have an RV hookup, you are assessed for it. It is considered an improvement to the property, which if you're receiving ag or timber exemptions or both in Mrs. Miller's situation, you have to take one acre out, a standard across the board for Idaho, Valley County. So we, our staff was treating her just like they would treat anybody else. So she is calling it a campsite, which I can't disagree with. Our terminology is home site, but they mean the same thing. So Mrs. Miller visited with me. I explained that to her and she, she wanted to talk to you guys. So we went down to the clerk's office and asked Gabby to put her on the agenda because she wanted to talk to you guys about it.
Because I was told that you people made the decision.
Well, that's my question to Sue, is even though she's missed that deadline for an appeal, can we still take it off the rolls?
Oh, I mean, no. We turned, we had to turn the rolls over to the clerk.
And that's already done.
Right.
And there was no way I could respond to that. The assessment was mailed out on the 3rd. I got it about a week later. And then a week after that was the 24th, which was my birthday, and I was in Primeville. I couldn't make it here.
But you can also.
But I called.
Yeah, you can appeal through the mail, too. You don't necessarily have to come over here.
Nobody told me that. I called.
It's on the form. It's on the appeal packet that you have the option of either non-appearance or if you want a personal appearance, then we try to accommodate that and so that you can come while the commissioners hear your appeal. But, but they'll hear it either way, even if you're not here. Anything that you send in is, they get to review and go over. But that's right there in the appeal packet.
So Sue, to go forward, we're set like we are for this year. Is that correct?
We had to turn the roll over to the clerk, yes.
So next year.
By Idaho Code, we can't make any more changes.
And I think it's really important to understand that we have a lot of people that do this, put power to a certain piece of their big ground and that immediately changes the classification of that to a residential one acre parcel.
Just 110 extension line. And I've had this all these years.
But when did you put the line in? Just recently?
Oh, 13, 14 years ago.
So it's just got discovered. So you've been getting away without this for 13 years.
It's just an extension cord. I don't have a power pole or anything. I have a meter that's attached to my neighbor's power pole. I get it from them.
So is that different if she doesn't have a permanent meter?
No. In fact, I was gonna show you a picture just so you guys can see that they took. I'm just trying to get logged on here.
It's a medical necessity that I have.
And I understand that.
It's 110.
I think it's important to realize that. Like I said, there's a lot of people do this, come up here and buy a lot of, put power to it.
I understand that and they stay all summer and they use it as a home.
And it changes that classification for that way.
I'm here an maximum of six weeks, like two trips, two to three weeks.
There's a lot of people that are only here a short time and we have to treat everybody equally.
They say, though, if you want fair, you buy a ticket.
That's a good line.
If life was fair, horses would ride half the time.
That's an old one.
That's an old one.
And it doesn't matter. I was not sure that I was gonna make it this year. Doubtful next year. I'm 93 years old and it's a 400 mile drive.
She's amazing.
She's amazing.
But the time is coming, whether it's next year, this is the last year, the next year, then I won't be back and it's still a home site, no matter what.
Yep.
Well, I want to see the picture because to me, if you don't have a pole and a meter box and all that, you're just plugging into your neighbor's.
Yeah, I do have a meter.
That's a whole different thing. But if you've got a meter and all that, that's.
All it is, I don't have a breaker or anything. There's a meter that just, so that they don't pay for my power, but it's on their power pole. I have just a short pole with a meter that Idaho Power.
That's what trips the classification change. Doesn't look good, I'm sorry.
And once you, once you do stop coming up here, that cord goes away.
I'm sorry.
So once you quit coming up here and that cord goes away, then does it revert back?
No, when she establishes a meter box on her property, it's kind of a commitment for life.
Okay, so there you have it. There's your picture. It was taken last August when we were out doing reappraisal. And so this type, so she's only assessed for an RV hookup with electricity. She is not being assessed for water or sewer because there, there is no water or sewer. She's only being assessed for electricity. And, and that type of setup, it's all over Valley County now.
Yep.
And so to be fair and equitable to everyone, and, and there are lots of folks that are only up here a few weeks out of the year that own property that have put an RV hookup so that they can bring their camper and hook up to it, but they're being assessed the exact same way.
Well, how can that be a home site?
Okay. So our terminology at the assessor's office is a home site. That could cover any kind of improvement on the property. So let's say you don't have an RV hookup. Let's say you just put a shed on it. Anytime there's an improvement put on a, on a piece of property, there's one acre, if it's receiving exemptions, one acre comes out of either ag or timber. Because now there's an improvement on the property, even if it's a shed. So even if you had a shed rather than an RV hookup, it, it would still be the same situation. Our, we, we have to, we have to treat everybody the same. And so if we were to not assess you for your RV hookup, then we wouldn't be fair to the person that lives down the road that has an RV hookup, just like you do with your camper there. I'm sorry, I, I understand what you're saying, but.
It's not fair all the way around then.
In, in my world.
Two or three weeks, they're.
They could be here two weeks.
None of us should be assessed a home site.
Well, I think the thing that you gotta keep in the back of your mind is that even though you're here for a few weeks every year, you're still gonna need an ambulance, you're still gonna need a sheriff, you're still gonna need trash. There is an impact to the county services and this is how we recoup that cost to provide those services in case you do need an ambulance or a sheriff that's available and that's what this is for. I don't think looking at your valuations, your taxes are gonna be very much.
No, it, it's not. Yeah, it's not the amount, it's the designation.
Right.
That I'm objecting to.
But that meter box changed that classification. And we have to treat, like you said, everybody the same because we have hundreds of those in the valley.
Okay, then, then when I quit coming and, and the property will be in my name and, until I die, which is not too far distance, then my son and daughter will inherit it. If that power is taken down, when I know I can't come back, will that change the designation?
You would probably have to come back in and ask for, what do you call it? If you took the power out, it would all convert back to forest and ag.
She'd have to, you'd have to contact our office or contact me and I'd have an appraiser go out and see if the, everything that you had installed was, which that would be pretty tough.
If that meter box is removed and.
Well, you'd have to completely disconnect it from wherever it's stemming from and electricity would no longer be ran to your property, which I'm not sure why anybody would remove that, but.
Well, when I don't come, which I've been doing for 16 years.
Someday when your son and daughter-in-law take over the property, they will have to requalify for the timber exemption and the ag exemption, just so you know.
Yeah.
And if for some reason you guys decide to rip all the power out and take it completely off the property, we'd just have to have somebody go out and verify that with you. You wouldn't have to be here, but you could ask them to go out and they would call you, I guess, if they had questions. But I would assume your son and daughter-in-law would probably appreciate having power to the property if they decided to take their RV there.
So if I'm looking at her taxes, the only improvement on there is $4,940.
That's the RV hookup.
So your taxes on $5,000 is?
That's the one acre home site value.
Okay.
Is what about $4 bucks?
This will be, so it got put on the rolls and so she won't see the difference in her tax bill until she gets the bill in November.
Right.
Yeah, this is just an assessment, though.
Right, right.
I'm sorry, Joanne, we're kind of running out of time. I don't know what else to tell you. I wish I could help you. But I could say this sets a precedent that we don't want this.
This is a state issue?
No, it's a.
Well, it's a State Tax Commission, yeah.
It's rules that she has to follow when you make an improvement.
It's Idaho Code. I mean, between Idaho Code and the Idaho State Tax Commission, we have to follow the law, which, so.
So just, just the 110 power according to Idaho Code makes it a home site.
Because there's an improvement on the property. It doesn't specify a list of different things that could be considered an improvement, but anytime there's an improvement to the property, there we go.
Okay.
I believe how it's working.
We're out of time. We gotta move on. Okay. Thank you, it was good to see you.
Sorry.
Really proud of how gracious you are at your age. That's awesome. I hope I can make it.
Yeah, God is good.
God is good.
I miss him, honey.
I do, too.
I met you once.
Just a little kid picking my nose.
Having lunch.
Yeah, take care. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for hearing.
You bet, you bet. Okay, we're gonna go back on the agenda to our 10:45. This is an action item. Frost Property Management Development Agreement Negotiation. Mr. Frost, welcome. I understand there's, you can just come up to the podium there, state your name for the record, please.
Jonathan Frost.
Do you mind if I call you Jonathan?
John's fine.
Okay. And I understand there's kind of a concern about the development agreement when it was presented to us, you weren't here, and so we assumed it was an either or. And it seems like since then, we've learned that, no, you guys aren't really interested in, in doing the 10-foot right of way and you would rather do the paving. Is that still on the table?
If you guys would allow that, absolutely.
I think we're still trying to perfect our development agreement process. We leave a lot of it on Cindy and Jeff's shoulders and that's really not the way to do it, but like we said. like we said, at that time, we assumed that you guys negotiated either-or, so that's kinda how we voted, but um, I do feel like if you're not willing to donate the, the extra ten feet of right-of-way, that that would be a takings. And, um, we could certainly have our attorney look at it and see, but I'm at the feeling today that if you're willing to pave and help work on that road, I think that would be acceptable to us. Jeff, would that work for you?
Yep, I work with John and we pick out certain bad areas south of Roseberry and just have him overlay those.
What, two-inch, inch overlay? What do you do?
Inch and a half.
Inch and a half, yeah.
So, is there, the question that we had when we did this was the fact that that road's not in terrible shape. So, we were questioning if there was even any overlay that needed to happen. And the county is trying to acquire these right-of-ways.
Got it. Define terrible shape.
Well, you've seen some of the county. We have a lot more need than farm-to-market at this moment.
It's up to you guys, you know, as far as what you want to pay.
Tell me the concern with the right-of-way, because this is, when, when people developed, John, this is our only way of receiving the proper right-of-way. This was an old easement across farmland. So, the county is just trying to, um, you know, to own the, the the right-of-way of the road in which we, of which we have there, so we can actually widen a shoulder. Do work within that easement that we can't currently do.
Right, understood. So, could I explain my, or if you, if you don't mind, commissioners, I'll understand my knowledge or awareness of what is being asked, and then you can correct anything.
Sure, sure.
Thank you. So, my understanding is that right now, there's a twenty-five foot or fifty from the center of the road wide, um, easement, right, right-of-way easement, and that's a federal law. I, I understand that. However, this is an additional twenty-five feet, uh, or, excuse me, it's additional ten feet or thirty-five feet from the center of the road onto our property. And that would be us donating the entire, from the middle of the road or whatever, over thirty-five feet to the county. But it would only be, we'd only be compensated for ten feet of that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, it just doesn't seem right to me that we're the only ones that are being mandated or asked to do that, and so, and I don't see there being a problem in the future if a freeway or some reason that we need to expand that road goes in, that they wouldn't do, uh, what's that called, eminent domain? Where the government comes in and says, hey, we're taking the whole thing all the way up. That, I understand that too, so.
Well, and there's another aspect too, John, that.
Please.
Um, you know, you have to pay for a survey, you'd have to pay for it to be described, and there's a lot of expense on your part.
Right.
To do that, and I think that's kind of unfair.
Thank you.
My, my question was to Cindy, we require it for subdivisions, but do we do it for, require it for commercial building?
Never done it for a commercial, always done it for subdivision.
That's what I thought.
And so, you're not the only one being asked. I mean, it's, it's being asked all the way along farm-to-markets. That's, anybody that's subdividing along farm-to-market is doing the same thing, John.
Are we subdividing? Because it's one lot. It's still one lot.
Different application.
Yeah, so I think what happens, there's a mix-up in the way it was called, a subdivision. We're not subdividing anything. We're just putting a building on one lot that's already there.
One parcel.
One parcel, thank you, Cindy. So, uh, it just seems, I don't know, it just doesn't quite seem like everything fit together when it doesn't make sense.
Why did you need the CUP in the first place? What was the reason for applying?
For commercials, storage on a rural parcel.
So, there's no subdivision of ground?
Yeah.
Well, then, this probably didn't need an application in front of us at all.
No, it didn't.
So, then, I, I would say that we don't even take the paving, because if it's not a subdivision, then we don't need a development agreement. Alls he did was.
That's fine. It was a condition of approval that they, that he negotiate with the board, because there might be an impact because it was a commercial use.
And I really appreciate the fact you'd be willing to.
That's fine.
Hey, we're gonna be paving out there. We could go down, uh, Roseberry or somewhere and do that one bad pothole for you real quick, and that would be appreciated.
There's one on Roseberry I'd be happy to do, I'd drive on every day.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd work with Jeff on that, and I think he'd really appreciate your help, and.
Sure.
As far as I'm concerned, we're done here.
Okay, thank you, commissioners.
Okay, thanks for coming in.
What do we agree on?
No development agreement, because it's out of subdivision. We're only doing them for.
Oh, no development agreement, period?
Yep.
He said he'd have to.
But if he's nice, he'll fix that one pothole.
Now, we get that one pothole fixed. That's worth something. Thanks, Cindy. Hey, our next agenda item is not an action item. This is a presentation from Payette National Forest, who is not here, so we will go mute.
Have they come in in person?
Chairman Commissioners, yes, I believe that they are going to be attending in person.
Okay, so let's take a five-minute break, Doug, and we'll see if they show up.
Trip over that microphone, that's the only thing.
Okay, welcome back. We're at eleven o'clock. This is a presentation from Payette National Forest on old growth. Is that like old foresters?
Thank you.
Old foresters and old growth? No comment?
Depends on who you're talking to. You have to self-identify if that's the case.
Yeah.
I refuse. I can pass down whatever you need.
Especially I got these local organizers here, but, and they'll, um.
You know, you know, old bloggers?
And bloggers.
New forest regulation.
New forest regulation. That seems a little ominous.
I am on that call, and it is the most confusing, horrible call that I am on, on the old growth initiative.
Oh, really?
Countrywide, and yeah, it, it, that is the worst conversation that we've had, because it is just.
Is it posted out, the Washington office or?
So, while you're passing those out, what I'd like to do, just for the record, have you guys introduce yourself so we can get it on the minutes? Whoever wants to go first.
Hi, Paul Klaasner. I'm, uh, I'm with Intermountain Region, actually, but I was on the Payette for a long time and just down to the national meal trip down in Boise, so Dennis, if I could come and put some perspective from that, the, the Washington office was there.
Dennis Benson, McCall District Ranger. Good to see you again.
I'm Brian Harris. I'm the Public Affairs Officer of the Payette National Forest. Now, Paul did actually say, Paul's been here forever. Did you come to McCall in two thousand?
Whatever, not that long. I've been here since two thousand and six. I was on the forest.
He's been around.
I was on the forest as a forester and wildfire crisis strategy coordinator.
So, you're considered an old-growth forester?
Jeez, I'm a forester.
No, I'm not quite that. I'm middle-aged. I'm middle-aged.
You're middle-aged.
Mature, mature. That's what they call mature and old growth.
Are you the one doing the tour of focus?
I was, I was doing the local perspective for that. It was the Washington office team that came.
So, Paul's from the regional office, but he really is here to help. I always have that little joke. He's from the region, from the Washington office. So, so he is, he is a good, good helper for us, for sure, but.
I ask you guys to come because being on that call on a national level, there are so many different conversations going on right now and touchpoints. And getting and dialing down into how this actually impacts the Payette in the Boise is what my concern is, what our concern should be. And so, I just asked for some, you know, how is this gonna impact us?
Well, and actually, Sherry, let's just go directly there. I mean, we can talk about, you know, and, and let you guys know about how this whole process is folding out. But let's go to that. So, I think at a base level, it's fair to say that, you know, when we do a project, we analyze for a lot of things. Fisheries, wildlife habitat, uh, vegetation as well, too. Um, if this amendment is, just goes through and becomes a part of our, uh, forest management plan, it'll be another aspect that we inventory for when we're planning a project. Um, so, you know, what does it mean on the landscape? Well, it is a little bit pre-decisional to talk about that, and it's a little difficult to tell because it's project by project, too. Um, you know, just like, I guess the analysis, I would say that if we're doing a, if Dennis is doing something in McCall Ranger District, and it happens to be in an edge of a stick habitat, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna pay a lot more attention to that, for sure. Um, when it comes to our timber, um, projects, uh, we need to pay more attention to the old growth, uh, component as well, too. So, that's kind of the, the baseline. Um, you know, it's difficult to tell, you know, exactly what it means for us, but, um, I would say this, do we think that anything's gonna change with our, our overall focus of being part of the wildfire crisis strategy? And no is the answer to that. I mean, we're still very proactively getting out there and, and, uh, reducing fuels using commercial harvest as one of our primary ways to do that. And then, of course, non-commercial harvesting and prescribed fire as well, too. Um, so, you know, Paul, you could help out a little bit, but, you know, on the Payette National Forest, we have a, a five-year timber plan. Um, so, we know what those places are, where we're gonna be next year and five years out. Uh, when we get, and when this does go through and it becomes a part of our land management plan, uh, we'll take a look at each one of those timber sales and see what that means for that. Um, are some adjustments probably necessary, um, because of this amendment? Yes, is probably the answer to that. But it doesn't mean that we'll do less. You know, I don't wanna say yes or no to that, but our likelihood, because of our overall focus of getting uh, fuel reduction done through to the purpose, is that we may actually do a little bit more acreages, still get the same volume, um, out to the local mills.
So, what is the, um, okay, uh, since you're talking to an old logger up here.
Yeah.
What is the reasoning behind why they call it old growth?
Yeah.
I mean, old growth, to me, sounds like it's getting toward the end of its life cycle, and it's gonna fall over anyhow. So, what was their total reasoning behind this?
Bill, I think that's, that's a great question, actually, and, and, you know, you know, all of us being in the forest service and you being a logger, you know, what is your definition of old growth? Let's, let's talk about ponderosa pine. You know, and El, what do you, what's old growth for you? And Sherry, what's old growth for you? Um, and I think that's very subjective across the entire spectrum, actually. Uh, conservation.
One concern.
Yeah.
Anytime you put that kind of objectivity.
Yeah.
The federal agency, that's a concern.
Yeah, it is. Um, but, you know, uh, you know, conservation-oriented people that used to Suez, they have a definition of old growth that might not match anybody in this room. Um, so, that was really the first effort. You know, where it first came from is really through the executive order, uh, from President Biden. And it wasn't just for old growth. It's really for management of the, uh, various different aspects. Um, but it applies to the forest service and to the BLM, and this old growth, um, or the mature and old growth component is just one section of that executive order. Um, you know, the first thing that they did is, is really identifying what it is. You know, so this handout right here, what does it mean? Um, and there is no, there is no one definition that fits all, because it needs to be very specific to the local piece of land we're talking about.
Yep.
You guys know that our several species here are the ponderosa pine, our Douglas fir, our grand fir, my miss and Paul.
Uh. Aspen. Lodgepole pine.
Yeah, lodgepole. As we get higher up in elevation, the lodgepole. Yeah, the aspen, for sure. But, you know, those are the trees that historically have been here. Um, do they need some help right now? Yeah, they do, and you guys know that as well, too. Um, so, when we talk about old growth, we wanna talk specifically about this piece of land and ponderosa pine that's on it. Um, that we move up in elevation and get more into that shade tolerant species of grand fir. Uh, what, how does this and old growth apply to this piece of land? Um, so, that'll mean something to us on the Payette here, and likely, likely similar on the Boise as well, too. Of course, we know they get into lower elevation as well. Um, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's the same thing for an Oregon coast forest. Something is very specific out there that's very different. Their several species are, are much more shade tolerant and the moist, humid, humid-type forest relationships, so. Um, so, you know, I, I was, actually, they put out quite a report, and I'll give it to you if you want it. I think I'll give it to Larry and make him read it. But, um, there's a report about, there's a report about defining what, uh, what old growth is, and I'll be honest, I tried twice to read through it and fell asleep both times. Um, but then I worked myself to get through it.
Time. They could not, we had way different opinions on what that meant, and that's a concern, you know?
Exactly. Yeah, so for us, you know, the amendment as it sits right now, and Paul helped me out, but, uh, for a ponderosa pine, twenty-four-inch DBH, um, or two-hundred-plus years old, just as a general definition. Uh, and then how many of those are, are on the landscape per acre? Um, now, Paul helped me out. When he was a silviculture here, we were very much, and I believe we still are, uh, very much in a mode of, of we're trying to leave those legacy trees on the landscape as well. You know, the, the old growth, uh, trees themselves, um, you know, provide a heck of a lot of different elements to the ecosystem out there, too. Um, so, that's been our focus on the forests, is keeping whatever project we do, you know, do we sometimes do, still do a Kirk Ed Paul? How does that work?
Um, I mean, yeah, but usually with reserved trees.
Yeah. Yeah, so the various different prescriptions that we use on the silviculture site, uh, we've always had, well, for some time here, had a focus on leaving those legacy trees in sight, because they, we want those to come back. You know, ten trees of ponderosa on an acre, that's not bad. Um, but are they all, um, you know, one, uh, age class? Well, if we look at old growth, then yes, but of course, we need that multiple age class across that acre.
My concern about this kind of a policy, though, is, and it is, sorry, we've seen it in Idaho, is that the mills are, then they don't set up for bigger trees. And I had some timber harvested a couple of years ago, and I had two big red fir. They wouldn't take them. Well, they'll, we'll take them, but we're gonna charge you to shave them down. Well, why don't you guys have a bigger head? And so, you're setting the policy of investment in our sawmills. We're not gonna be able to touch a tree over twenty-two inches. Forget it. Okay, and, and just like you guys said, sooner, or Neil said, sooner or later, and usually in this country, it's lightning, is gonna kill those big trees. Now, you've got a beautiful piece of wood you can't even salvage.
Yeah. You know, um, you know, when we talk about, and, you know, I always get a lot of questions from just anybody that says, why are you out there cutting those trees? Uh, or after a fire, for example, whatever the case might be, but, you know, and what my response always to that is, is that we work extremely close with the, with the local timber industry. Understand what it is they want. You know, we pretty much base our, a lot of our prescriptions exactly on that as well, too. Um, you know, recently, we did what we call the Little Red Goose, um, project, and that was pretty much an effort to address the salvage of the bug and disease.
Is that a little goose?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think I heard about that, yeah.
Most of that was grand fir in there. Um, and at that particular time, the mills were like, gee, I'm sure we really want a bunch of grand fir right now, so. So, we did have to work with various, uh, different aspects of that, and we did still get the project done, for sure, and if you have, well, you can't get up Goose Creek right now, but once you can get up there, once highway, once the ITD is done with the road. Um, but yeah, get up Goose Creek and check that out. I think it looks really good up there, for sure.
Well, and I think what it does, you know, just like the redwoods in California or sequoias, it's a recreation attraction. People wanna see those kind of trees. And if you do an inventory, hey, we've got this tree up here, this tree over here, it's gonna create some economic drive for Valley County, just people wanna go check them out. I've got a red fir that's eleven and a half feet across.
Yeah, wow.
It's huge, and it's still green.
Wow, that's awesome.
And we've lost ponderoses from lightning blew the tops clear out. They were six and a half feet. In those days, the mill could take them.
Yep.
Now, they can't. What do you do with that?
Yeah, that's a tough one, El.
Let's talk about the process of talking together, because that's, that's where my concern comes in, is, you know, we're kind of mandated that we talk together and be partners together. And as this conversation started, and all of a sudden, county commissioners throughout the county. as this conversation started, and all of a sudden county commissioners throughout the country are made aware that this old growth rule is coming down, and they're calling an amendment, I just heard you say they're going to add it to the forest plan. Where's the NEPA? Where's the conversations upfront with the commissioners? And then the Washington crowd came to the NACO Conference, the National Association of Counties, and said, well, we'd like you to have a small group to talk to us about this, as from the county viewpoint. I said, no, 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 that's not the way the rule works. You know, those conversations need to be had with your local commissioners. And I mean, they pushed this through in eight weeks. And it's, no, that's not the process. We need to follow our processes and make sure that we, together, partners, are communicating together what these types of things are, you know, are, and how it's going to impact us. I'm worried about our recreation. How does this impact recreation? I have not gotten a clear answer at a Washington yet on any one of those calls. They have no idea. It's all up to the local forester. All of a sudden, we get a local forester that says, we need to close granite goose to all recreation because there's old growth on there. No, that impacts us as counties, that impacts our economy and our ability to run the programming that we have. So my largest concern is the process, how it has not worked, and how, right now, you guys are, the foresters getting sued by so many states on this process.
So, so, and you know this, you know our process. So this amendment goes through, it changes some things. And then with any future proposals, any future granite gooses, we bring that, we show that, we demonstrate that, we talk through it, work through PAET Forest Collaborative, those things, and we have those conversations. You know, for McCall, I don't have a lot of trees because much of my landscape has burned. But we are concerned about the recreation impacts. We are concerned about all the elements, the endangered species. And, and as Brian stated, this is going to bring another element that we're going to have to analyze for. And so if there is old growth, as defined, within a future sale, we're going to have a conversation about that. And we're going to come up with some management opportunities to talk about how we address that. And I'm comfortable with it. I understand your discomfort. And so it's bridging that gap, and that takes place right here. The next timber sale we have, we're going to bring it to you, and we're going to talk about it. It's going to be open to the process. Does that help?
And I get, I get where Sherri's coming from, because we've steadily watched, you know, the access that the public has to the forest, you know, to all public land out there, has slowly been declining over the last 40, 50 years. And we don't want one more thing to hit the fan, say, okay, now we have another way to shut off this little area, shut off that little area. That's, that's detrimental for a resort county. We get so many people to come up here, and you guys know that.
I, I also see potential benefit. So say we find a stand of, of trees that are very attractive to the public, then we have a conversation about how do we do something to get the, the public access to that? Make it a destination, you know, those kinds of things. So I see it as an opportunity to highlight some of our stands of, of tamarack or, or old, old pine trees, and say, here's a great destination along some of our creeks and riverways. We, we can talk about improving the trails into those areas to, to get folks in to enjoy that.
Yeah, trail system, it's huge, needs to be re, really looked at and rebuilt.
Oh, no, I, I think, I, I'd just say, like, this, the amendment, the proposed amendment and the preferred alternative, or the, is the term that I'll use, the preferred alternative? It's, it's to amend the forest plan. So it's really just going to provide management direction of kind of at a programmatic scale, big, big scale. And it's to, it's not to limit, actually, it's, it actually encourages proactive stewardship is what the phrase they use in, in those old growth stands. And by proactive stewardship, there, the tools that are available and the preferred alternative, and there's different alternatives in there, but the preferred allows for the use of timber sales, prescribed fire, non-commercial thinning, mastica, you know, not other mechanized and non-mechanized activities in those stands. If you read through the threats analysis, it's like a part of the why is, when you get down to the, the nitty-gritty why, not the big picture, we're trying to be consistent with the executive order, but they recognize that with climate, with the increased, or the predicted increases in temperature and increased drought, and then insect and disease impacts that are going to kill some of those big trees that we've seen around here, and what increase in wildfire activity, frequency and extent, it's important to go in and actually manage in those stands. And so like the, the treatments that they've been doing on many of the activities, like with the PAET Forest Coalition and the Boise Forest Coalition, they're going to be very, very similar, or identical, actually, because it's, it's not trying to, amendment actually recognizes the need to actually go in and manage in those stands. But you can't take them out if you have a stand that's in that condition. And it depends on the forest type as to what the definition is. Like Brian gave the definition of, in a ponderosa pine, you have to have at least 10 trees per acre that are 24 inches in diameter, and they have to be 200 years in age to meet those criteria. You can't take it out of that condition. That's not a forever thing, because you, you guys have already acknowledged it, we're going to have wildfire, we're going to have insects and disease. So old growth isn't going to be like boundaries on a map that are there forever. It's going to change as things change. Some stands are going to grow into that, some are going to grow out. And, and so that's going to move across the landscape, where the old growth is. That's all acknowledged in this amendment, is what I learned, is, I really just started diving this a few ago, so.
And we were afraid that it was going to be one size fits all. And it's like, you know, Idaho's, and from north to south, Idaho's different.
Yeah. So in Region 4, they're using the definitions, Ron Hamilton was a council now, but he wrote a document in 1993. That's, for Region 4, that's the document. Every region will come up with whatever those criteria are. So there's a bunch of different forest types in there. And I think for the Boise and PAET, it ranges from about 5 to 25 trees per acre, diameters, like in a lodgepole pine stand, it's, I can't, I don't quote me on the exact numbers here, but like, it's going to range from more like 12 or 14 inches for like a lodgepole pine, I think, up to 24 inches. You have to have so many trees, criteria.
Well, two things you just said that give me great pause. One is the preferred. We got that as county commissioners, same date it was released to the public. We had zero input, which is not the NEPA process at all. We were to be, it was to be relayed to us, whatever the options were, and be a part of that conversation, was given to us as the preferred period. Not a good policy. And secondly, who's we? Is that the forester gets to go in and make those decisions? Is that in conjunction with the county commissioners? Again, per statute, we're partners.
So Sherri, if I could-
We don't feel like partners.
Yeah. If I could say a couple of things that, that might not help at all, but, but the reality-
Pretty high right now, Brian. I'm trying to really be good on this side of it, but-
The reality is, you know, so when did I learn about, Paul, a preferred alternative, same time you did?
Exactly. That's a problem. So somebody in Washington's making decisions for us, and I am not appreciative of that process at all. And I'm, and I'm, I'm really trying to be nice to you guys, but I'm more than a little hot over this whole thing.
Yeah, Sherri, I don't, I'm not sure, you know, it, it happens to us, just like it happens to you. You know, when we hear about this, you know, coming through, then, you know, who on our staff do we have to adhere to it? So there's that aspect to it as well, too. And then, like you said, a lot of things are done, you know, within a small group.
With a magic pen back in Washington now, instead of going through the-
Information every once in a while. Yeah. But, you know, I, I think the good thing is, you know, it is a draft EIS that's out there right now. So we have time. You know, it is the preferred alternative, and if we dig into what that actually means versus the other alternatives, so we could sure do that, too. And I'd offer that to any of your staff or anybody that wants to do that. If Valley County wants to submit a comment, it started on June 21st, and it's a 90-day comment period. But if you have a staffer or somebody, Sherri, that, that you'd like us to sit down and really go through this stuff with, we're more than willing to do that as well, too.
I've got a question for you. Remember back when we logged in the 70s, that, we logged a stand of old, it was a, what'd they call it? They had a word for it back there over on the Oregon coast.
CCC?
It was, it was a, the standard timber was-
Oh.
Was primitive or real old. We couldn't take anything less than 20 inches through. So is this is kind of like a reverse of that?
No.
You guys can log around and through the, the old growth. So you can take up to 24 inches, let's say, stuff around it to get where the trees aren't catastrophically tight, where they just jump from one to another.
Yeah.
So they're going to let you do that through those stands.
You know, like I said on the ponderosa pine, you know, the standard is 10, 10 trees per acre, 200-plus years old. But are we going to, are we going to log on those sites? Absolutely. You know, if we bump into an acre of land there and it happened to have 150 old growth, which of course it wouldn't, but, but it doesn't mean we're just walking away from that and leaving it there. You know, would it be, I mean, an acre of land to have 10 trees of old growth? Boy, that's, that's kind of pushing it, I think. I mean, you know, as I walk through some areas right now where, where old growth is, I see an awful lot of stumps from 80 years ago and 100 years ago as well, too. But, but yeah, no, very much that. It, it's not a, it's not a, don't touch, you can't go into this acre. It's very much that we're still, like I said, moving forward with the fuel reduction aspect. You know, and bringing back and, and still keeping in mind, you know, what our forest plan says is supposed to take place on that piece of land, too.
And that, that means, that means a lot to us because it's, it's also, we can't touch it. And that's what we hear from Washington. Everybody does.
Bill, it's not a spotted owl situation.
Exactly.
There is a more restrictive alternative in there, right? There's three, there's three action, there's a no action, and then there's the preferred alternative, which allows for those tools that I mentioned. But then there's a more restrictive alternative and a less restrictive alternative. So just so you're aware, like when we're talking about, that's what, when I said that that's the tools that are allowed, that's under the preferred and the less restrictive. But under the more restrictive, there wouldn't be commercial harvest allowed.
And that is, you know, and that's what we're hearing. And that's why my frustration is, is because when this originally came out, the lack of communication from our federal government was epic. And we heard this is the new way that we are going to create wilderness. You know, you're just going to go in, you're going to designate this as old growth, and no one's going to touch it. Which, for us, you know, we're 89% Forest Service, however much we are now, and the fire risk to that is huge. You know, we don't need more wilderness in Idaho. We've got plenty of wilderness in Idaho. We need managed forests that are not going to impact us. We've had smoke now for days. You know, so we, we need to manage this together. My concern is the lack of communication. The lack of transparency on this has been epic, in my opinion, and it's an epic fail. And so it's, you know, how are we going to communicate together? I thoroughly appreciate Dennis being here. You do know that recreation is important to this region and this area. That's what we're pushing for. And anything that impacts our recreation, we better know in time to help you make better decisions at the national level. Because that's, you know, we, as counties, unfortunately, we don't have that one person that goes in and does just this work. We may have to, because from what I'm hearing, Utah's got 11 attorneys on board, and they are suing the federal government right and left, anything to do with resource management planning. We're going to, we're working on our resource management plan today, and I fully anticipate that we will, you know, do whatever it takes to, to make sure that our, our plan will be followed at the end of the day. And so when these types of things come down, we're hearing it from outside, and we're not hearing it from you guys. And we really need to have a better process of communication. Because when we heard that, I immediately called Larry, hey, they're trying to do, you know, something more to, to eliminate our ability to do planning for these areas and recreation on the Forest Service. We very much appreciate our research, our partners on the forest. We have a lot of trails to go over your guys' property. I mean, we'd love to work with you guys on campgrounds. There's, we're trying to legislate this year through NACO that we will be able to bring in some third-party vendors and put concessionaires on some of the forests. NACO's pushing for that heavily this year, so we can get it to Congress. But when it's at the behest of a president that's using a pen to change all the forest policies, and it's not going through Congress, I'm not okay with that. And there is no public involvement in that at all. And it impacts us.
Larry shot all doom and gloom.
Larry?
Not all doom and gloom. He's a pretty good guy.
What's up, guys?
Watching, he's behind you now.
I know, I'm a little frightened.
It's good to see you.
The arrows are-
I appreciate so much what you guys, our commissioners are saying. And I know that you guys have received an order, and you guys are trying to massage the order to fit what our needs are in Valley County, and I appreciate that. But just getting down to the basics of it, when you talk about how you're going to look at how it's going to affect timber sales, well, that's for us that want to see timber sales. On the other side of that, there's all, that other side's going to file lawsuits on every single timber sale and stop them because you haven't done exactly what they think you should do on old growth and mature. When Dennis talks about adding trails to go look at old growth and stuff like that, I would, because you haven't been here that long, if you want to look at what's happened on PAET, on trails, motorized, non-motorized, in the last 30 years, we've lost over 40% of our mileage. And every time we talk about adding, it's, well, we got to look at forest planning. All of a sudden, you guys are opening up forest planning. Why don't we just do forest planning instead of just doing amendment on the forest plan? Let's get rid of no net gain, which is based on false science. You guys know it. Let's get rid of it. We're going to all work really hard on this for a period of time, but I think, I think the Chevron decision is going to come into play quickly. And here we go with more lawsuits. So all we do is, should I say, make a lot of attorneys happy and rich. Well, anyway, that seems like the direction we're heading on with this. And I know you guys can't do anything about it, but just understand, that's what a lot of people are looking at right now. I would love to add trails. I'd like to get some of the trails that have been taken off of our system and get them back on. We've got, what, 40% increase in population and yet 40% less opportunities. Anyway, I appreciate you guys. And I'm sure Dennis is going to talk to you guys about the condition of RAC before this thing is over, too.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
So Larry, I'd like to, with you on the, on the trail stuff, you know, let's get down to specifics and that type of stuff.
Yeah, I've, I've got that report that IDPR did a couple of years ago that shows all the trails that used to be on it and are gone now.
And we also have a rec council that's looking at, you know, what are the future opportunities? Because Larry's right, we are growing in leaps and bounds. Every single weekend, our campgrounds are so full. And people are just camping anywhere now. We're trying to for harden campgrounds. We're trying to do the right thing, but, you know, red fish has fire. Who knows how that started? And that's going to happen up here, too. And it's really frightening to all of us. So, you know, how do we work together to try and improve and enhance the trail networks?
I'd, I'd like to just vision a little bit, coming from the Deschutes, that was, became very intense. And the importance of working together, and you guys are starting to talk about a group coming together, just like the winter rec forum, it's an opportunity for everybody to sit and talk through. It just appears to me like we are ready to move into a recreation forum for the area. And-
We have a group already formed.
Yep.
I don't know, is the forest on that? I don't know that the forest has a seat on that.
We need it.
We need to probably put the forest on that.
And, and that would be, you know, the, the logical next steps. And then from that, have other small groups. And so I've already met with Citra, with the mountain bike group. It's like, your voices all matter, but everybody's coming at it from an individual angle. It needs to be looked at holistically. And so I've shared with a couple of different folks, the Deschutes Trails Coalition, and how now there's 35 groups within that that are talking about how to improve access, since 75% of their tourism economy is on federal lands. It's a lot different here because there's county lands, IDL, state, and Forest Service. We need to talk holistically so that one group's not going out and building more trails that might be impacting endangered species acts at animals without thinking about other things. So I think it's time.
I have to make one comment on that. People are outbuilding trails because all the trails are full, and they're building them in places we don't want them.
Correct.
Not groups, right? They're just one-off people that I've seen on the back of a four-wheeler, on the back of a motorcycle, it just takes off. So without that trail building, we're, we're going to have use on the forest that's not the use that we want.
But even the management of what we currently have. So let's talk about Bear Basin. You know, we, we don't have the share the trail aspect of things yet. And so I get- You know, we, we don't have the share the trail aspect of things yet, and so I get complaints. There were a bunch of horses on the trails after our, our last rain event. You know what? Those were elk that have been using those trails for a really long time. We need to have those types of conversations, and let's talk about sharing the trails. Because just like in Bend, it went from the motorcycle groups went out and built a bunch of trails, and then the mountain bikers took them over. No, we, we have a unique opportunity to share our trails. So let's come together as land managers, have that conversation, and allow our user groups to start working on that. There, we have got a tremendous need for volunteers. We, we don't have a very big volunteer program yet. How can we, as land managers, work to develop a volunteer program to start maintaining some of these trails that are disappearing, because we don't have the staffing to do it?
Larry, can you work with Dennis and try and put together some kind of a collaborative meeting?
Dennis, I really appreciate those comments, because we've been looking for those kind of comments for years and years. In the past, it wasn't that way. It's just, this is what we're going to do, and you guys have to accept it. And it's like, well, if you guys don't build them, they're going to build them themselves, which is happening in Boise National, all over, right now. And nobody's going to like where they go, because they end up on private, they end up on state. So I am really thankful you're coming out with that attitude. That means a lot, and I appreciate it. And I'm just going to tell you guys, we're out of time.
Oh, no. Well-
We moved into recreation.
It's time we're going to put in a little more time so we can-
We'll be here next week, Ben.
Absolutely. RAC, are we making any progress?
Yes, a little bit. I did share with Larry what something to think about is, you know, on a, having been the designated federal official for the RAC, typically, we have about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars per year that we can focus on to get out for projects. The one benefit, I told Larry a couple of weeks ago, into not having a RAC right now is that money accumulates. So in two thousand sixteen, RAC was not reauthorized, so money built up. And then we had the two thousand, let's see, nineteen projects submissions, and we had one point four million dollars in there. So a lot bigger, better projects were done at that time. So if that helps at all. But on the other side, are we getting it together? And yes, we are. We do have to go through an outreach process. Unfortunately, I've, I've lost enough of the people that committed initially, and you're still committed, Sherry. But I've lost the other ones, and now I've got to get at least a group of nine people together, and I've got seven right now. So I do have to go through-
Sherry, we probably should get him on next, because he's on the four-year, and I'll be on my two-year, so.
All right, so why we deal-
Longevity week.
Yeah, when the time comes, I'll be after, well, maybe not me, I'm going to retire.
Do it, be both.
Will be, actually, I heard that, Al.
Well, yours is enough.
That's enough, yeah. So making progress, but I do have to go through a process of advocacy, you know, to keep it open to anybody that wants to be on it.
Thank you all for coming up. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Our new forest supervisor started today, Matt Davis, so.
We'll look forward to meeting him.
There's his bio there, so.
You got his bio? Go.
Thank you, guys.
See you, guys.
Thank you for coming in and taking the heat from me.
Okay, we're going to move on to our last agenda for the morning. This is an action item. Scott, come on up. This is a decision on repeating the parking lot, Sheriff's parking lot and alleyway.
Alleyway?
Yeah.
I, I got with Brad, and he, he went through the numbers that they agreed to, you know, two years ago, and actually came back seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars cheaper.
Oh, nice.
But one of the things that came up when we were doing the CIP the other, last week was that there was eighty thousand dollars available. So we're looking, we have four options we can choose from, which ones we want to do. We wanted to do the alleyway and the parking lot back here, and after doing that, we still have about twenty-one thousand dollars available, which would allow me to do the west side of the, of the jail back there, all the asphalt along there, and that, we have a crushed culvert right there by the Sally Port and stuff. And then, we're discussing with the clerk, if we have about another sixteen thousand, we could actually do the whole project and redo the asphalt across in front of the Sheriff's Department, too, there.
That would be awesome.
So, like I say, if-
For another sixteen thousand, so you need-
Yeah.
Is that the ELC, too?
No, that one, we're going to have to-
We'll have to wait until we get the parking-
We got, we got to get something figured out with the school, with that hole that just, every year. Right now, there's no water bubbling up out of it, because there's, you know, thermal shut off on-
Yeah, I almost drove in that whole other day when I was parked. I almost drove in that whole other day when I was parked there.
Well, we had cones around it, and then everybody ran over and mashed them off, so we've got to buy new cones and put them back around.
And then we take sixteen thousand out there?
I knocked, I knocked one of the cones over, stopped real quick.
Picking it out of pilt, because that's where it was going to be funded from. So I just wanted him to bring it to the commissioners to see if they would be amenable to having the full project done with an additional sixteen thousand. So what's the total cost, Scott?
It's ninety-seven thousand, one twenty-eight seventy-two.
That includes the additional sixteen?
Yeah, that's, that's with the additional sixteen.
Ninety-eight thousand, one twenty-eight seventy-two.
Ninety, ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven thousand, one twenty-eight seventy-two.
Yeah, commissioners, I would recommend that that be funded out of pilt.
And I'm going to go ahead and make the motion, we authorize the expenditure of ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars, seventy-two cents out of pilt to do all these paving projects around the Sheriff's Department and between the courthouse.
Does that replace that crushed culvert, too? Yeah, that's, that's re, digging, you know, digging that. Basically, it takes the asphalt from almost down where U of I is along the building there, and that culvert and stuff there. Okay, cool. Second-
Motion's a, a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Is U of I already paved?
What?
Is the U of I already paved in front of that?
Out on the other side of them? Is that, that's, yeah, that's kind of part of, you know.
Anything else? We got a few more minutes.
No, thanks.
I see lots of work down at the fairgrounds.
They're, they're putting forums in right now. I was on a, talking to Toby this morning. They probably three, four of the arenas put up now and stuff, everything, so they're going to start pouring. Our bleachers will be here August first, so three days before the radio starts, so everything goes to plan.
Just hope that happens, huh?
Yeah, really. But, yeah, they're, they're getting after it down there. We did have a walkthrough with the engineers up last week at, at the transfer site. Unfortunately, on Monday, when we were there, the trash was back out in the building, because they had mechanical breakdowns, and the engineers really couldn't get the side to measure. But we've got, I think we've got a plan of attack for it and stuff on that, and how we're going to do it.
Do one bay at a time?
Well, what we talked about is, since we didn't, in the capital improvement we had for this year, we didn't buy the, the grinders and the equipment, since we have that in the capital improvement fund, is what their proposal right now is, when you go around the, the building, they have that pole barn right there, is take that hill, that bluff where they, or that hill where they go around to load the trucks, and we'll build a Z-wall up there, and what we'll do is to probably take two of the bays off of that pole barn, and what we'll do is, we'll be able to put roll-offs down below that, we'll have a forty-inch too-high wall there, and what they'll do is, household trash, people can throw it in there, and we can, like I say, take one bay down, still have one for commercial, the, the Lakeshore trucks that come in from their routes, and still be able to use that bay, and we keep the household kind of people out of, in there, and, because it is in really, really bad shape, what we could get to. And then we probably got from where they push it off or put it into the trucks, now twenty feet, there's no more asphalt there, or concrete.
Wow.
It's down to dirt.
We got to get some-
And what's kind of weird is, we got, look, and they, they exposed some of the concrete force, it's, it's like a sidewalk thickness, poor, it's, it's small rebar in it.
Got a cheap job in the beginning, man.
Yeah. So the engineers are probably going to try and come back up once they get the building cleared, because they're having excavator problems, and they're peening up the one they always use still in the shop. Their John Deere rental broke a pin on the thumb, a new one, and they're having trouble getting that pin, so they rented a cat. Cat's kind of small in there, so air can't load as quickly, so.